You're watching GCTV. Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
6:38 PM and it is May 8, 2019. We are at the John Zahn Center at 35 Pleasant Street here in Greenfield, Massachusetts. This is a regular meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee and it is the vision of the Greenfield Public Schools that every student have access to an academically rigorous, enriching, and well-rounded education that affords them opportunities to be well-connected scholars and contributing members of the broader society in which they live. Hey Cam, welcome. Can we have a roll call please?
Member Holland. Here. Mr. Mayor Martin.
Here.
Here.
Oh Karen. Remember Karen? Sorry. Yes, I'm here. Member Ward, maybe?
Here.
And myself, I'm Brett Schramm.
Have all members had a chance to review draft minutes from 4:10:19? Okay, is there a motion to approve draft minutes from 4:10:19?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Bill? Bill, are you, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Member Holland's? Okay, so motion passes unanimously, thank you. Are there any members of the public that are here to comment today? Okay, seeing none, we'll move right into our business. I did receive a request to delay reports and to skip right into the new, into our regular business today. We do need a motion to do that.
I'll take that motion.
Member Ward moves to delay reports until after all of our business?
No, just skip them entirely.
Okay, Member Ward moves to skip the reports entirely. Is there a second?
Second.
Can I speak to the motion?
Yes, absolutely.
There's a full agenda here and I'd like to get, I'd like to get to work, get, take care of business. I know that the reports have a purpose and, you know, not to, honestly, we've, it's rehashing stuff we've already done and, and they're available, there's, all of those subcommittee meetings are available to the public. We're excited if you attend, if you don't, that's fine, the minutes are available, I believe, they're, I would, I would just soon get to new business.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of skipping reports entirely say yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you have a discussion?
Did you have something you wanted to say?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just clarifying if you'd also like to skip the students or just go straight to business. I don't think we actually have, we're good for tonight, so.
I would say that the students are the best part of our reports.
(laughing).
If they are here, I love hearing from them and if they're not, then so be it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm opposed. And any abstentions? Member Holland's, what is your vote?
I don't see any.
Okay, so motion carries, we will skip reports today. I'll just say that there's a couple of notes, I just passed out Chair's timed agenda, there's a couple of notes in the timed agenda related to my report. Just take a peek, this was accidentally omitted from the digital packet, so it's there for you. And we will skip right on to our business. Our first item is Mr. Bill Deal and I don't see him in the audience today.
Mr. Deal is planning to come based on the original timed agenda.
Cool.
So I would suggest that we move to the other items of business. I know we have to fill the vacancy, but we do have a number of members that are here to present on the middle school presentation this evening as well and I would ask that they be invited up as early as possible in the agenda.
Okay, I move to move business item number three to the first position on the agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. So, everyone that's here to present on the Greenfield Middle School, please come up to the table. There's a microphone here. You do need to press the button and make sure the green light is illuminated and then we'll double check and make sure that the presentation is on the screen.
Sorry, because that's just going to short out your light, I want to make sure it stays plugged in.
Okay, Superintendent, do you want to make any preliminary comments? And?
So I'm very pleased that we have an opportunity to talk to you a little bit tonight about the work taking place at Greenfield Middle School and the Math and Science Academy. We have several colleagues from the Department of Education statewide systems of support with us here tonight and we have really appreciated the guidance and support that they have brought to this planning process and we have a number of members of the dedicated faculty and staff, administration and teachers here with us tonight. And I have had the pleasure of participating in a number of, although not all, of the work taking place and I really just want to thank the teachers that have made this their commitment. I think the middle school work right now is so exciting and invigorating because of the staff that cares so much about the success of the school and the parents and the students that are part of this process and so I'm really excited about this work bringing us to a vision of where Greenfield Middle School, where it will be and where we want it to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, I want to thank you all for inviting us and welcoming us here to share the vision of the Greenfield Middle School and the Math and Science Academy as we move forward in our turnaround plan. I'm Karen Kuzin, the principal of the building. Again, so we started with just who we are. We are a diverse community of learners who take pride in the importance of community service, learning, service both within our school and in the greater community. We have a wonderful faculty who do things for our kids inside and outside of school from winter festivals to running some of the programs for reading outside of the building throughout the school year to make sure that our kids have an opportunity both during the 180 days that we see them in the building as well as times outside of the building. Again, we are working together to make sure to reach a common goal to ensure the successful future for all of our young people.
(laughing).
Shouldn't do worse than I would do.
Oops. At least we have the screen showing up on here, so that's always at least nice if it's different technical difficulties. She was laughing earlier about, she keeps on losing technology in her classroom and so she might not have been the best person to, to do this because she was worried about touching a computer and having it go to a blue screen. So, thank you, I appreciate the assistance.
There you go.
Yep, so we're back to our assets and our strengths. Again, being an extended learning time school, it's the opportunities for that additional enrichment that obviously is a draw to the building and that's what we want to be able to continue. So between the band and the music classes, which you'll be able to see again very shortly in the Memorial Day Parade, from our opportunities at the YMCA, our students are preparing right now for their graduation from the Equestrian Program at Stonely Burnham that will take place June 1st. We are thrilled to be able to offer different STEM enrichment and hope to be able to grow that opportunity for all of our students. And again, we really can't be the building that we are without band, PE, the theater, the family consumer science, the sewing classes and the Spanish. And I know that's a bigger piece of, part of the budget, but this is one of the draws to our school and our facility that we really want to highlight. And again, the turnaround and why, so I also want to invite to the table Donna Harland and Christine Shay, which I will step back so they have, can have the space here, to talk about from the state perspective of what exactly does turnaround mean. It's a designation that we receive because of our current MCAS rating that obviously didn't just occur overnight, it's been a process that's been going on for a number of years. We know that it stems from all the buildings and the funnel into the middle school and we're hoping that this opportunity for our building will also help with the, some of the issues in the, in the district in general. So I want to invite both of them to the table right now, thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I stand?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Sure.
I'm Donna Harland and I am, this is my 50th year as an educator, so I like to stand like a teacher does because they very seldom sit. And I do want to pay tribute to all of the Greenfield Middle School folks that are here. We have been doing, Christine and I have been doing this work for 10 years. This project for turnaround began 10 years ago for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. I'm one of the co-directors for the West Central Region of the statewide system of support. And Christine is a data specialist and an assistance lead for that same region and our region goes from Worcester all the way to the end of the Berkshires. And so what I want to start with is that we have worked with hundreds of schools in this process. And Christine and I both have been here for 10 years doing that, which is why we can add up to 100. The other part of it is that it is one of the most exhilarating exercises that communities have ever been through. And I say that with utter confidence and with no exaggeration because this is about your children. This is about your kids getting the very, very best thing they can get, to be able to show their own personal progress, to be able to grow and learn and share with all of those things that we just saw, the Equestrian Program, et cetera, et cetera. But the issue here is that teachers and administrators in Greenfield are absolutely dedicated to this work. And I have to tell you with all sincerity, the way this team has come together at Greenfield Middle School and the way they have coalesced into four separate projects actually, their four turnaround practices, and they're going to teach you about those in just a second, is one of the most extraordinary things I've ever seen. You have done remarkable work in coming together as a faculty and your teams and they have created a path to finish writing their turnaround plan and they're going to teach you about the plan. We at the Department of Ed are simply assisting them. We share stories, we talk about places we've been before, we invite them to go visit places who have been in this situation. This is an opportunity, this is not any kind of critique or criticism. It is something that hundreds and hundreds of schools have done now for 10 years and who are now continuing to do it. And so the community needs to be very, very careful to listen to what they're doing, to talk with them about what they're doing. These practices are based on years of research. When companies across the country began to say, well, how do schools get better? How do they learn how to do it differently? What do they do differently? And that's where the four turnaround practices came from. This is how it's done and it's been proven again and again and again. And so I invite you to listen to their presentations really carefully because they're going to teach you how this can be done. And frankly, my friends, these folks have already begun to turn around and we've worked with them for how long? A few months?
January.
Since January. And so not only was this a new situation for you, and again, you know, it's exactly true, this has been, we've been building to this point of struggle, to be frank, for a long, long time. And that's exactly what schools do. They work at it, they work at it, they work at it and finally they just kind of go, ah, we didn't quite make it this time. This time, I invite you to think about that because there will be a whole new round of accountability tests, there will be a whole new round of accountability status. And I've got to tell you, the plan that these folks are building is one of the strongest I've ever seen. And the collaboration with the collaborative, thank you for being here, Bill, is just extraordinary. They are inviting professionals from all walks of life to come help them with this work and it is very specifically about the four turnaround practices. And they're going to do it. I promise you, they're going to do it. So thank you.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Donna.
(laughing).
The voice. Is there any criteria for becoming a turnaround school?
Yes, yes. And Christine's going to go into that really carefully. And let me just let her do it.
Sure.
It's the lowest 10% in the state is what it means. And so she's going to teach you about that right now.
Thank you.
Christine Shay and thank you Donna for that. And it's hard to follow that, but I will address Mayor Martin's question. So, the state has tried to figure out, they have so many resources, how can they figure out where to target their resources and provide the most support? So that's what they've done with the accountability formula, which really comes from the federal level. But Massachusetts has thought of it really as, how can we target our supports? And they have targeted the bottom 10% of schools. And the way that that is figured out is by, I think that's still on the Y, but it's a formula that's based on MCAS achievement. So, English Language Arts, Mathematics and Science, Student Growth, which is also part of MCAS. And this year, it was new that they added chronic absenteeism. They wanted to know, you know, who, what are some of the issues with students that are not coming to school? And those are students that miss at least 10% of the school year. So for the 180 days, that's 18 days or more. They're considered chronically absent. And they also wanted to put in performance of English learners, which may not be up there, but that is sort of the English, the, the track that they're taking, English learners take towards proficiency is also part of that. And then separate from that, they're also looking at how are the subgroups performing? So, there's an overall number and I wrote down, Greenfield's at the eighth percentile overall. And then there's a number of subgroups and one is students with disabilities and it's the same data and they're looking at the students with disabilities across the state and for Greenfield, they're at the second percentile and the Hispanic-Latino group is at the first. So in the, the targeted support that, that we're providing and the plan that the school is working on, they're thinking both broadly about all the students and then how can we support the students that are struggling the most?
Christine, we've been cited in the past for ELL, so will this also take care of the, the past citations? This turnaround, so if we're looking for a goal and a, some type of passing grade at the end, if you will, will it also address the past year's citations?
Superintendent, honestly? Yes. I'm not as familiar with those, so.
It will do that because Mayor Martin, this accountability system is, is the ranking of, is the new category, frankly. And so with this turnaround practices work in place, those past citations are rolled into this as well. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the most recent report I read had 30 districts in the state and Greenfield was one of them, but not the top 15%, I think, or 10% were really, really being focused and the other 27 included, included Greenfield. Is that the same?
What was that, the year?
The 30 targeted districts in the state?
Oh, no, sir, there's, there's hundreds.
But I think there was a 7% level threshold, so if you were below 7%, you were in the, in the group of 30.
Maybe you're thinking about below the fifth percentile, that's called comprehensive targeted assistance and you're not in that condition. You are simply below the 10th percentile.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are, I, I'm asking about the formula and this may not, are the different parts rated differently? So for example, is absenteeism rated harder than our scores on the ELA math or is it more even? We do know as a district, we have struggled with absenteeism in certain portions of our district and we are working on that, but I just didn't know if there was a way that those were rated or weighted or?
They, they are weighted and I don't have the exact weights here and actually the, the MCAS and the student growth are weighted more. So, I mean, I can get you the exact weights and get that back to you, but yeah, so, but it is a new piece.
Yeah.
So it may, you know, be affecting schools differently because it's, it's a new piece of it.
Sorry, I'm the one that told them to change.
Oh, that's okay, I think it's good, we can change it now.
(laughing).
And we may have hit on some of the what.
Right.
So I guess just a couple of things to mention on there is the, in terms of the targeted supports, some are people, like Donna, myself and Les Edinson wasn't able to be here this evening, but he's also part of the team. We have content specialists in math, ELA, science, we have support in, for students with disabilities. So we have our own team and that's part of the assistance. There's also grant funding that's available. So, this year for the plan development, the school was awarded $25,000 to really support the team and their work. So it is taking, I mean, they put in a full day's work and they're also spending more time outside of their school days working on the plan. So it's allowing for some stipend time. And then, I'm just trying to see if there's anything else we should mention there, I think we're set. Good for that slide. And as Donna mentioned, you know, the research really pointed to, you know, how do you leverage change? What are the, the things that you really get traction from? And they came up with, the state and actually across the country came up with these four turnaround practices. And the first practice is, is really focusing on leadership, both, you know, looking at the administrative level, but also collaborative leadership among the teachers. And as, as Donna mentioned, it's, it's really true that this team came together very quickly. They're very dedicated and very impressive, putting in the extra time and just really their understanding of what has to happen. So, you know, tap one is one of those areas that we can really see coming together quite quickly. The second turnaround practice is looking at instruction and, you know, what's happening with that in the classrooms and really targeting what, what are the practices that teachers need to be using to improve student learning? The third is looking at what are the student supports that are, that are available and how do we address all student needs? And the fourth is looking at the school climate and culture. So there are four teams that are working each on each tap and the reason they all often come together to talk is there's a lot of connections among the four taps. So it's not just four separate things happening, but really how can we come up with a cohesive plan that's going to really make change quickly? So.
Stakeholders.
Ah, and I think a, a really nice piece that has come together with a subgroup as well of the teachers and associate principals is convening community stakeholders. And they've had two meetings so far where they've invited different stakeholders to come and give some input on what's working, where do they see challenges and what are some ways that the community might contribute to supporting the school? And I think there may be another meeting coming up just to make sure that they get everyone to the table that they want to hear from.
That's really it.
Member Exstrom?
Just transparency, I'm actually a member of the community stakeholders and wanted to ask a question. This, and we spoke about it a little bit at our meeting, but this isn't something that just came out of nowhere and suddenly, you know, there's, there seems to me that there's something happening between the elementary schools and going to the middle school. It's not just those years. Is there, is, are you all looking at the grade schools at all to see that they are sort of, I don't want, I don't want to say stepping up, but ensuring that the education that's needed to be ready for these tests is happening at that age as well? Is that a piece that you do?
We, we will not be in the elementaries, but we do vertical kinds of analysis. So the transitions from grade to grade to grade, based on the standards, based on the framework standards. And so we are examining that and your superintendent has done some extraordinary work with the State Department, with DESI and with Johns Hopkins to become part of a group that's doing a curriculum audit and that will be vertical analysis of what is taught, again, as the kids transition all the way through. So the, the short answer is we will not be in the elementaries, but your superintendent has set up some systems there that are really very outstanding. I mean, she has taken advantage of many, many things from the State Department and that has not only brought you this $25,000, but lots of other money. This curriculum audit is free for you from Johns Hopkins because of her efforts. And certainly the middle school was very willing to do that, to, to see what's going on, to your, to your point.
Does the funding available allow for work to continue in the summer?
Absolutely.
Is that when the work primarily will be done or is it during the school year?
It, it's after school or in, you know, coordinated times within the school day, but there will be a lot of work this summer. In fact, we've begun talking with the teachers about, we're writing this plan and there's a deadline for that and we've got this money to pay you stipends, but the money also can pay them to get together throughout the summer. So the grant is designed in fact so that there's more time outside of the school day.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, I'm back again, Karen Kuzlin, talking about the turnaround practice one, which is shared leadership, the collaboration. And so, again, our goal here is to take a look at how we redefine the role of our instructional leadership team within the building, making sure that we're empowering our teacher leaders among our team, so that as we continue the coordination of what our initiatives are. Taking just one quick step back, one of the pieces of this process was, as both Christine and Donna alluded to, was the statewide systems of support and their content specialists came into the building. So, a lot of what we did and where we're coming from right now, the strengths and assets, are coming from the material and data that was provided to us, from the people visiting our building and giving, taking a look at what was happening within our classrooms, student focus groups. So, that's where all of these things coming in, saying, we have an ILT, we have a beginning role, well, we now need to redefine that, so we can clarify, to really make sure that we're taking that to move all of these initiatives forward, so that we can then put together school-wide academic and SMART goals. So, on the top, these are the members, myself, Ms., you were Karen Murphy-Davis, and Jess Carvo. Again, I could not have been prouder to, when I had so many people apply to be part of the turnaround team, I found it very, very important to find a role for all of them. And so, we became leaders of the ILT, and then, added the additional members of the turnaround team altogether, and you'll see all of us presented as members on each of the independent slides. With that, it is a team, and I asked some of the members of my team to also speak tonight and just share with you a little bit of the different TAPS. So, again, I am kicking off with the TAP 1, and I'd like to invite Brian Tucker to join me for TAP 2.
She tapped me to talk. [laughter]
Hi, I'm Brian Tucker, and I'm on the TAP 2 team, along with Will Carlino, Mike Browning, who's here, and Tara DiGiavani. So, and I'm just going to mostly kind of sum up. So, our goal right now is to develop clear, rigorous curricular and instructional expectations, and support implementation through meaningful coaching and well-thought-out professional development. We're looking for resources to assist teachers in developing and delivering rigorous, standard-based lessons and regular effective feedback to both teachers and teacher teams. And our focus, again, develop teacher capacity design, deliver and assess rigorous, standard-based curriculum and instruction, and identify ways to support teacher effectiveness.
Thank you.
Okay. TAP 3?
Yes, TAP 3.
Oh, wait, one second. Superintendent?
While they're transitioning, I just want to add one thing, that an example, excuse me, an example of the current work taking place around effective instruction was immediately beginning work with a math consultant who's come into the building, providing analysis, support, and resources. So, those kinds of sort of immediate supports and assistance to the building. We find that teachers do the best they can with the materials and resources that they have every day, doing a creative job with the students that are in front of them. But if we want to get better results, we have to provide better supports, better resources, and better tools. So, some of what we've done already regarding effective instruction has to do with bringing in the content specialist that you heard folks talking about earlier, to really take a look at, how can we hone in on more effective instruction and provide those resources?
Thank you. And as the superintendent of your superintendent taking advantage of the grant of DESI.
[laughing] Thank you.
[inaudible]
So, I'd like to invite Ms. Barbara Unitas up with me as well for our TAP 3.
I know.
[laughing] I'm leaving.
Hi, sorry, I'm really nervous. Okay, so, I'm part of the TAP 3 team, and TAP is turnaround practice. And our goal is organize a school-wide system of data collection and analysis that is used to provide student-specific supports, so that all students have equitable opportunities to meet high standards. Teachers use data to inform lesson planning, instruction, and targeted interventions, a tiered system of support that provides targeted assistance based on identified student needs. And our focus is to reconfigure skills block time to ensure targeted, student-specific instruction is being delivered, and identifies common assessments to be used throughout our school.
And I will share that, you know, this TAP is really focusing on that ELL, that Latino, Hispanic, and the special education populations, knowing that, again, that's that additional support of those demographics that were highlighted amongst our report as to the groups that need that additional support. So, overall, great instruction and great lessons, but making sure that we are reaching every single child who walks through our door. So, that's the importance of that student support in TAP 3. Thank you, Barbara.
Great, thank you.
And on to TAP 4, and Ms. Annamar Fefka.
Hello, I'm Annamar Fefka, I teach 5th grade at GMS, and I'm on the School Culture and Climate Turnaround Practice. And some of the members are here as well, Michelle Fenimore, Nora Israeloff, and Cecile Campbell. And our goal is clear expectations for student conduct and related practices for behavioral support are clearly established by leadership and consistently implemented by all building staff. Teachers feel confident in their ability to engage all students, and students feel valued and supported. Enrichment activities are equally available to all students to support adolescent development. And our focus really came out of, you know, student focus groups, teacher focus groups, parents, leadership. So, this is really driven by our community, all of us together. And our focus is strengthening the professional community amongst staff, school-wide commitment to common goals, and develop a shared vision for cohesive school community.
I have a question related to this. Is there a portion of this that is addressing kind of relationship between the school and the rest of the community? And, well, I guess, occasionally, I've received some feedback related to kind of like, just overall an interest in hearing more about what's going on at the school, and I'm curious about, you know, just sort of like bridging into the community and into the families. And I'm wondering if that's part of this?
Actually, I'm gonna, I know she wasn't on there, but I'm gonna put her on the spot and bring Michelle up with me, so Ms. Fenimore, come join me. Come on. Thank you, Anna. Only because it will fit into with the timeline in that next piece, because, again, between the two of us, I think we can come up with the list, but that's part of that stakeholder piece, to really reach out. So, some of the folks that we reached out to just recently was making that connection with one of the deans over at GCC. And so, for me, that was extremely empowering, because we were sharing that it's their Latino and Hispanics who are struggling at the college level as well. And so, working, having that opportunity to work with them, to figure out, again, part of this whole process is about root analysis. So, we're struggling, but they're not just struggling here with us, it's a continued struggle that we see from our students and/or just the students at those same demographics later on. And so, having that opportunity to have that broader conversation, to figure out, if they figure something out, if we figure out something, we can help each other in coming up with those opportunities. So, we've talked about, you know, tutoring or getting some of those students who are at the campus there, finding ways for either getting our kids to the campus. That just came up, and you'll hear that at the next school committee meeting, not to jump outside the box, but our reader-to-reader program just got an opportunity to go to Amherst College. And the kids were just so enriched of like, wow, there's something outside of Greenfield, and this is what a college is like. And it really opened our eyes to going, we have that great facility in our own backyard, why are we not using it more? And so, that, to me, is the powerful piece of the stakeholders. But I know, again, we've reached out, we've, you know, Kristi with Park and Rec, the library...
We tried to put together a group of community members that were representative of our demographic in our school. So, we worked really hard on finding the right people, and all of the people who showed up were very committed in helping us ensure that every child has success. And what, that looks different for each child. So, it was a diverse group, and we're working with them to create these longer partnerships in the community. We have a community service learning block during the day. And so, we reached out to them and said, how can we strengthen these partnerships, and what are the community needs, so that we can help fill those needs from our school? And so, we'll be holding another meeting, we had two, and we'll be holding our last one of the year at the end of May, and then, I'm hoping to continue this, you know, through the fall, and make this a staple of our school community.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, our last, the next to last slide is just the timeline of where we're at and what's been going on. So, as we stated, you know, again, we got the designation after MCAS scores come out, gets that public piece gets published. So, we started, or I started meeting with the SOS staff in November, doing some of the preliminary and the planning to get the initial grant to get the $25,000 here to the school district. Since that time, we have included, like I said, the site visits from the SSOS ELA Math and Science Content Specialists. Part of this process was also having another site visit from another school works organization that comes in and does research, and was able to come in. Unfortunately, we had a snow day that kind of got them a little delayed, so that was a little less time in our building, but they were there, got to meet with student groups. In fact, because we were delayed, it became one of the questions that was raised by the members of our team. And so, as we continued, we realized that we really wanted more input from our students. So, another full day of student focus groups was set up that was run by the SSOS staff, coming in and meeting with them and getting more data for us. So, again, the lovely part of Google Drive, so we have a lot of Google folders, which allow us to collaborate as well as independently add information, and that's where, you know, the time is that we're reading and going through and surmising what one person put into theirs, because as this piece comes along, it's not just saying, oh, it's what leadership does or what's happening during collab time. It's then fitting into the professional development that helps the teachers then see what those instructional strategies are, and there's not one that you can do independently without the other. And that's part of what we've all developed and figured out as doing this process together. So, the draft turnaround plan itself has been working on now, and we're continuing through this month of May. The goal is to submit the turnaround plan in June. The deadlines have kind of ebbed and flowed a little bit. Our goal is still to have our draft and our plan into them more at the beginning of the month, so that we have an opportunity to get some feedback, so if there's any revisions, that we would continue being able to do that and meet the full deadline by the end of the month of June. The implementation parts of this, again, we've already started with some planning for professional development. So, we worked with one of the specialists on school climate last year during our faculty meeting time, and so, we are arranging time for Poly Bath to come back this summer, where we'll have an opportunity for teachers to then volunteer to come in. Not volunteer in terms of, I'll volunteer, but they, again, stipend positions, but coming in in the middle of July and have an opportunity, because I don't feel that that needs to be or can only be just this team. We want to make sure that people whom may not have had the commitment to be part of the whole turnaround process also have an opportunity, if they are interested, in helping us move forward, because we know that one of the bigger pieces of our challenge is the school climate, because we know that that will address and change so much more in the building itself. And then, the ongoing process of, the ongoing monitoring of what's happening continues as the benchmarks and the accountability process continues from the state, and that continues from 2019 to 2020. And overall, this is the beginning of a three-year plan for us. So, as you see the timeline right now, that is just the first year into the implementation, but we know that implementation phases, that we are now on board for next three years of going through this accountability, taking and seeing where this progress monitoring is going, and redesigning and revamping what it is and what students are, how students are leaving Greenfield Middle School and the Math Science Academy as they exit and head off into 8th grade.
Thank you.
And that then gets us to my, the very last slide, just says about questions.
Okay, perfect. Mayor Martin?
Thank you, Karen. What I find missing from the great assessment and evaluation process you have going is expected and measured outcomes. What is expected after the effort, and what do, what are you comparing yourself to?
So, again, that's part of the process that we're doing here. Our measured pieces are going to be talking about, are we making effective progress? Do we see that in the student growth on the MCAS, as well as the overall ratings on MCAS? One of our progress monitoring will be, what are we going to do with the chronic absenteeism? How are we going to do more outreach, quicker outreach? And that's part of, it's not fully developed yet, so I can't answer to what those specific benchmarks are yet, because that's still in the development stages of what we're writing in that plan.
So, we don't have a good idea of what our goal is going to produce?
Well, can I just quick, could I just say, you know, about benchmarks?
Please. Yes.
You need to be on a microphone for...
Oh, yeah, if you could please come up.
Thank you.
There are different sections of the plan that are required, and we've been talking a lot about strategies. So, what are the things that have to be done in order to affect change? But another really important piece of the plan are benchmarks. So, how do you know, as you're going along, for each strategy, that you're making progress along the way? And what we do during the year, and we haven't really talked a lot about this yet, because we're just getting to this piece, is we meet quarterly, and we'll meet as much as they'd like us to, but at least quarterly to say, so where are you on your benchmarks? Are you meeting them? Great. If not, why not? What has to happen to change that? The other piece that's there are annual goals. So, the benchmarks just bring you up to that goal. So, if the goal is to make a certain amount of improvement, the benchmark each quarter would be moving you towards that. So, we will know, say, by November, are they on track where we think they should be to get to that end-of-the-year goal? And then, there'll be a couple other outside, potentially outside evaluations. School Works comes in, and they have been doing that, you know, it's a year-by-year decision from the state whether they fund it, but they come in and they do observations, focus groups, interviews, and look at some documents, and say, so have you made progress? And as Karen mentioned, they did that in the spring, and so, they'll come back next spring, as long as there's funding, and do that again, and say, okay, so, you know, hopefully there's some improvement, because they're looking at the same indicators. And that data has been really important, sort of to kick off the turnaround process, as well as it'll be a benchmark after year one. So, you know, it's a very data-driven process, and we want to know early and often if, as I'm sure the school and the district and you all would want to know, you know, are people on, are we on track?
Thank you. There is, there is an understanding, I think statewide, that charter schools are wonderful, and that they don't serve the entire population of school-aged children. I'm wondering if, and our local charter school in town anyways, has recently provided some information on their percentage of economically disadvantaged, as well as ELL students. But I'm wondering, has this program, turnaround program in the past resulted in, in other districts, an influx of charter schools?
You mean going to charter schools?
Well, I think, I think DESI and the Board of Education, and even the administration has indicated a preference for charter schools, particularly DESI supporting increasing the numbers. So, I'm wondering if increased numbers have showed up in districts that have been recent turnaround strategies have been involved in?
I don't believe so, sir. No, sir. And one thing I wanted to say earlier, but this is going to be even more direct to your point, if I may, I was on a phone call with the commissioner today, and he is totally dedicated to this turnaround work. There will be more grant money. This man wants these public schools to succeed, and we now know how to do it? We've proven how to do it. Christine and I have watched it happen. And so, this work will continue. And to Karen's point, it will be for three years, and then, we will feel comfortable that you're doing just fine, and you don't need us anymore, and there'll be other people who do, because there will always be a 10%. But this middle school is going to make it. I can promise you that.
I'm sure it will. I'm also just wondering, one more question. Thank you, Chair, Madam Chair. Are we using, it seems you've done this before, are we able to use some best practices and strategies that have been used in other districts that have succeeded, like you've indicated right away? that have succeeded, like you've indicated, right away in Greenfield, and maybe accelerate the results?
Absolutely. It has begun. I'm going to let Karen speak to that.
Thank you.
No, actually, that's part of, I think, one of the exciting parts of this process. So again, both Ms. Yur and Nora Israeloff and I have had the opportunity to travel to cohort meetings. So we are meeting with other schools who are in the same designation that we are currently, but the amazing part that we get to do is watch videos and meet with other schools and other people who have already gone through this process. So that, they've already gone through the turnaround, they've already shown the successes that they've had, they're sharing the strategies that they worked, and that is part of the work that we're taking a look at. One of the requirements of this process is to make sure that one of the, within one of the goals that we set, that it has to be an evidence-based product, that we can't just fly from the hip and say, yeah, this would work great, and just put that into the plan. So again, we haven't decided in that, again, so part of the questions that you're asking, sir, right now, that's still in the development pages. So those benchmarks and those things that you're asking for, that would be available once that plan is finally in that draft, beyond that draft form, and we have that ready for that, for submission beginning of June. So we'd have more information there, but that's what this whole process is, about identifying what the best practices are, identifying the need specifically, because just because it was a best practice and it worked in another school district, doesn't mean if it's not the same demographic and the same concerns that we have in Greenfield, that doesn't mean that that's the right product or the right thing that you need, that we need here. And that's why we've taken the time to really take a look at what our challenges, our assets, taking a look at that root cause, really diving deep into amazing amounts of data. You know, we've looked at both the MCAS, the MCAS and all sorts of things to make sure that we are driving and pushing this to what we need.
I see Member Hollins and then Member Ward.
I have three comments, three questions. Sounds like your work is fantastic, your work and the superintendent's work, which is wonderful for a middle school. Two or three years ago, on the subject of school culture, the Department of Education issued some advisory on culture in the LGBTQ community students, and I was just hoping you might find that an added to your discussions of culture. The, every school district has a lot of structures in place, teacher contracts, school policies. I don't know if you'll have a chance, when you're doing your work, to look at the policies we have on curriculum instruction, or specific wording we have in our contracts that may inhibit the progress you'd like to see, but I would like to say, just as one member, if you came, it'd be good if someone was looking at that, and if you saw something that you thought we should address to bring to our attention. And the last is, generally, these standings are based on the number of low-performing students. The benchmarks are pulling up students that are the least, that are underperforming and not making progress. And I was just wondering if there are also benchmarks for students who have met state standards and are ready for advancement, which is just an interest that, and I was wondering if students, if there will also be benchmarks for students who are able to advance.
Yeah, because I, again, I would say that some of the benchmarks are not necessarily specific to the students themselves, but to the instruction and what the teachers are doing, and making sure that we are reaching all students is definitely part of that goal. So making sure that we are providing the enrichment for our high-level students, as well as the supports that are necessary for our children who are, who are struggling and are challenging in our school systems.
I do want to note that the middle school has, I think for two academic years now, had a GSA at the middle school level, and that's directly attributable to staff recognizing that need and working with students that very clearly benefit from having support structure, allies in the community, and having a very supportive school environment, and that is flourishing and doing very well at the middle school.
And just to, I'm sorry, just to answer your last point, Kim Hurle, who is one of the GEA building representatives, is also part of the TAP team. So we made sure to include that, because that's part of what's written into the plan also, is to share with the union to make sure, so things such as lesson plans, not just being available, but that they are much more readily available, and making sure that we don't violate, but have those conversations as to the things that are necessary to help the school move forward. So that has part, been part of the process already.
Thank you. Member Ward?
Just a comment. I want to say that this is, in my opinion, probably some of the best news that I've heard for the district in a long time. It really is. And I'm happy for you. I can hear the anticipation, the excitement in your voice, Principal Kuzlin, yeah? And I think that your staff deserves the credit that they're getting and the support that they're getting, and I couldn't be happier, and I think that the superintendent, it sounds to me like deserves quite a bit of credit for putting this kind of stuff together. Well overdue and well needed, and I, I'm really thrilled, so.
Thank you. It goes a long way during Teacher Appreciation Week for them all to hear this. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And Happy Nurses' Day. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I would, I just, I agree with Member Ward. I appreciate so much all of the work that's being done. I've, you know, I've obviously worked closely with the superintendent, and so I know, I've known that a lot of work has been going into this, and it's great to come here and actually get all, a detailed report about what is happening, and I sincerely thank everyone that has been involved in this process. And I am curious if there are any specific requests of the committee and ways that we can support you along the way. I know that there's quite a bit more work to be done, and yeah, if there's anything specific that we can do to support you, please let us know.
Thank you.
I just wanted to note, when I looked back, how many teachers and folks from the middle school are here tonight after a long day and a long week and taking on this extra work? So I just hope everyone was recognized. I don't know if they want to raise their hand.
Thank you.
Yes, Member Ekstrom.
You know, I just wanted to make one quick comment. I know that, that when you hear that your school is in turnaround, it can instill some fright and anxiety about what's going on there, but frankly, I was okay with hearing that, because it did mean that the state was going to be coming in, helping us to pull it together, and with proven background, you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, we do.
And, and help to give us the guidance, and they have been doing this for a while. So I, you know, I realize that people get anxious about it, but I'm not, nor was I ever. I think it's a great thing. So thank you for the assistance, truly.
How that, okay. To your point, it, we are from the state and we're here to help. And again, the progress that these folks have made in few short months, frankly, is just extraordinary, and the state is beginning to hear about that. And so you need to know that Greenfield Middle School is on the radar for the commissioner, and he likes it. He likes it a lot. So the other thing that I said to the staff, maybe the first or second time we visited with you all, is there is a ripple effect, you know, to your point about curriculum alignment, there is a ripple effect. And so in districts that Christine and I have worked with, if it's an elementary school that's struggling, the news gets out that they're doing cool things at the elementary school, and the middle school says, let's do that. Or if it's a high school, and so it becomes a district-wide kind of culture, if you will. Well, if they can do it, we can do it, you know? And it's not a competition as much as it is, we're all in the same boat, and here we all are. And I can promise you, Ms. Chairman, we will indeed ask for your help. I promise.
Great. Yes, Mayor Martin?
Just, I want to thank you publicly and the commissioner for the $25,000 grant. It probably seems we need more than that, but the $25,000 is nearly half of the increase in our Chapter 70.
What? Pardon?
Our Chapter 70 increase was $59,000.
Mayor, between the governor's budget and the House Ways and Means budget, it was a $50,000 increase. Prior to that, it was a $1.1 million increase in Chapter 70.
But the House budget is 59,000 more than what we had received. So my point is that the $25,000 grant is, is half of what the House has additionally given the city of Greenfield.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add my thanks. I think we have the best team from the statewide systems of support, working with the best teachers in all Massachusetts, so thank you for being here.
Okay, so we'll move on to, oh, thank you. Bill.
You can leave if you want.
Bill Deal, Mr. Deal, thank you so much. Bill is here from the Collaborative for Educational Services. You don't have, do you have a PowerPoint? You don't, okay. I'll go ahead and.
Bill, we moved the agenda while you were, so we apologize. You were not late. We just had to mention.
I don't know how to turn it off. And it said it was Greenfield High School. So I got to have a walking tour of Greenfield High School, and I walked around, I couldn't find, we, obviously, and then I reached one of the doors, and a bus was pulling up. Now the bus came, a young man's baseball team. Is anyone know the school community? Nobody knew. Finally one of them, I don't know what it was.
Oh, Bill, will you turn on your mic? Everyone wants to hear your story.
Does that work now better? Is it on?
Yes.
Pardon?
Here, there's one here, too.
There are a few more copies that people want to share. So I, the young man shows up, he walks me to a room, and he says, oh, they aren't here. And I said, I've walked all around the school, I don't know where they are. So what does he do? He pulls this out, and zip, 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 and he says, oh, you're in the wrong place. It's the senior center. So I'm sorry I'm late, but I got the bounty of walking through your wonderful high school. My goodness, really a beautiful building, and shows a lot of, of support for the young people in the community. You'd be commended for that amazing work. I mean, kids really know how you're honoring them, partly by the community and the, and this culture and climate that you provide with them. So I'm with the collaborative. I want to start off by thanking Mayor Martin for hosting, as well as, of course, Chairperson Nunes. I want to thank, of course, Susan Ekstrom, who's our board member from Greenfield, and Cameron Ward, who's our former board member from Greenfield, and Superintendent Harper, who's very active with the collaborative and the superintendent groups we have, and of course, Susan Hollins, who I've worked with in the past. And Katie, I don't know you, so good to meet you.
[laughing].
Okay. I also want to recognize Donna Harlan and Christine Shea. We work closely with them, and they mentioned that part of their focus is on ELL and special education. So the collaborative actually has a contract with DESI to provide those particular supports to these level schools. We're starting some work with Greenfield in those areas. I'll talk about it in just a minute. But I want to do four things. I want to give you a very quick overview of the collaborative. I want to talk about what we do for Greenfield, some of the things we're planning coming up, and then to see if you have ideas for the collaborative. So I'll just tell you a few things about the collaborative. The first one is, we are not from the state. We are, in fact, a member organization of 36 member school districts in Franklin and Hampshire County. We hope to soon have two more, and we will have all the districts at that point in time as part of the collaborative. Collaboratives across the Commonwealth are made up of member districts, and we, our first goal is to serve our member districts. Now, we work a lot with the Commonwealth on grants and contracts, and our goal, we believe, is taking those grants, contracts, services, and making sure that they are applicable and supportive of the districts we serve. Small and rural districts are not like Boston, and so being local and knowing what our districts are like help us really translate some of these things into what's going to be most useful for you. So that's the first thing I want to say, we're a member district, we receive no money directly from the state, it's all grants, contracts, and tuitions, so we also are a business that has to really work hard on making sure what we do is really high quality. So that's all I'll say about the collaboratives overall. We've been around for 40 years. We started out in special education, we've expanded greatly based on the needs. So what you have is this, this little packet, let me just walk you through this, it'll help talk about what we do, and also what we do for Greenfield. So the first thing, the service, the packet, if you will, is this services overview, and it describes all the different services that we provide for member districts, for districts overall. We serve not only our member districts, but we also serve districts in the Brookshires, Worcester County, Hampton County, and even as far as Boston. All of fee-for-service basis, they pay more than their member districts, allowing us to give discounts to our member districts, so it's a nice little business model. And if you look then at the back, you'll see our 36 member school districts. And I'll walk you through the services in just a minute in terms of what we do for Belcher Town. The first thing in your packet is the goals and strategies for our five-year plan, which ends next year, 2020. I want to point out, we have four goals. The first goal, our primary goal, is serving member district needs. So we spend a lot of time getting information from districts about what your needs are, what you want, what you need. We talk to the superintendents, we have surveys, all kinds of ways of determining that, and then we try to meet those needs with new programs and services or existing ones. Second one is fostering success of children, youth, and families. This represents direct service programs we provide, I'll talk about in a minute, including special education programs, after-school programs. The third strategic goal is developing exemplary educators. This is our professional development services. We have a licensure program. We do a lot around helping teachers and administrators improve their practice. And number four is innovative practices. And that fourth goal translates into things like, we've been working for the last year and a half with Turner's Falls High School on a turnaround plan that's being funded by the Bar Foundation, and we're the lead, we got the grant from them and so on. So we look at those kinds of opportunities to help our districts in innovative kind of ways as well. And we like to take things that are learned and bring them to districts as well. So we'll often, in our superintendent meetings or other places, we'll bring forth some nice innovative ideas that people might be able to use. So those are our four goals. Behind that is, I hope, is this chart? It's colorful chart? And this is about Greenfield. This is what we do with Greenfield. So the light, I guess it's light orange, are the special education programs. You can see there are three X's there. These are support services for kids, occupational therapy and so on, usually individual basis. What's not checked here is HEC Academy. You actually have a student at HEC Academy, but it's a student who's in foster care, and they actually are a Springfield student who comes through Greenfield. So you have that student at HEC Academy. We're very pleased to serve that student and to serve Greenfield in that way, but it's not checked off here, because you don't, you aren't paying for that, Springfield is. So we have occupational therapies, technology, and I believe we have OT services, I believe. Below that are alternative pathways. The first one is Mount Tom, and Mount Tom is a program at HCC campus. It's for students who aren't special need students, but who are struggling for various reasons in high school. And it may be they've been bullied, they maybe they are, need more attention, but they come to Holy Community College, they take courses there, they get individual attention, they graduate from their sending high school, and we've had enormous success with this program. You do have one student who's in the process of applying for that, and you have had students in the past there as well. We also are trying to approach Greenfield Community College about having a similar program there. It's been really, really successful in helping with students who don't necessarily fit in any nice bucket of special education, regular education, but we can serve. Below that are professional development, and I'm pleased to see that almost every single thing that we do is Xed. You have a very active administrator and teacher group who really takes advantage of a lot of things we do, both by coming to the collaborative for classes, sometimes Greenfield has classes here, or we do professional development onsite in Greenfield. So across the board, you're doing a lot with that. We do some help with grant writing and development. You have an X here, because we wrote the grant for the Title III funds that come through the district to serve EL students. You're part of a 28 district consortium, none of whom have enough students to qualify for money, but collectively we do. So we write the grant and provide that funding and support for our districts. Research evaluation is something we have, just so you know about it. A fair amount we do with technology as well. We, the beautiful website, I hope you think it's a beautiful website. Do you think it's a beautiful website you have? Thank you. We built that website, we host it. So anyway, not to brag, but we're very pleased with that, and I'm glad you are, too. We're doing a lot more of that with our districts. Again, we can do it for less expense than a regular provider can do it, advantage of being part of the collaborative. Early childhood, we primarily work in early childhood in Hampshire County, but we do some things in Franklin County, and they're marked off there. We do some PD, technical support, I'm sorry, mental health consultation, we have mental health providers who work in Greenfield area, and we did a couple of statewide assessment trainings and statewide trainings on developmental screening that you guys screening that you guys were part of. Enrichment programs. We run or we have the funding for and work with Greenfield High School to run the after-school program there. So we get... Draw money from the state that pays for that program. It's a really successful program. It is going this year for an exemplary grant, which will work with the school to write, and will give you three more years of funding. We think it's in a very good position to have that. We also, this past year, got a $10,000 grant from the state to provide special services in your after-school program for special needs students. So that added a lot to what we could do and allowed a lot of good services for your kids who really struggle academically but can benefit from that program. And lastly... Not quite lastly. The bottom of enrichment programs has... I'm sorry. The first... Second one's activities. You guys do this through the Franklin County REB. This is connecting high school students to internships and career opportunities. You have an active program in that area. We have a grant from the state to provide STEM internships. And we set up these internships for high school students with STEM employers, and the employers have to pay the students. So we only have the money to make it happen, and the employers provide that. And we've been in conversation with the high school around bringing Greenfield High School into that, hopefully for the summer. It's a great opportunity for students to get some more STEM education experience. And lastly, you're part of our cooperative purchasing program. On the back of this is a list of, in the last year... Two years, the different professional development events that your teachers came to. So again, a wide range of things you guys participated in. Really pleased again about your participation. In addition to those open enrollment, you also... We've also been working with you onsite. We did a Teaching the Strengths and Teaching the Strengths workshop here with Lourdes Alveres Ortiz. And we're working right now on social justice and culturally responsive practices at the high school. Is that right? Yep. We're working on developing professional learning communities for ESL students, and hopefully next year, working with... Doing a Shelter English Emergent 2.0 for your teachers as well. We also are working on... Sharon Jones is working on hopefully developing some paraprofessional training in the schools for ELL paraprofessionals. It's a very important, critical part of your educator force is those folks, and they often don't get the kind of PD that they really need to help the schools really develop well. So that is what we do with Greenfield. Any questions about that?
Questions, comments? Member Hollins?
Okay. And just behind that, I'll just point out a couple of things. One is I put in the summer catalog...
One second, Bill. Remember Hollins, did you want to...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's great. I had a couple of questions. Thank you for all of this information and for all you do. The Mount Tom Academy at Holyoke Community College?
Yes, correct.
Is it possible? Seems like we're always talking about the need for alternative programs. Is there possible for something like that? Or have you ever explored that at Greenfield Community College?
Well, as I mentioned, we are exploring with Greenfield Community College. They have a program that's somewhat similar. It actually isn't similar, but it's similar enough that we're having some challenge in terms of selling the idea of having a different program that is in fact different. But we are talking with them, yes. Especially with the new president. She's open to this.
And I had one other question. Under data services, do people still do 10-year enrollment projections?
We don't... Some people do. We don't, but we do do some data analysis. I'll talk about it in just a minute. Yeah. 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 Other questions about these services? So we have the summer catalog for professional development and the courses that are in licensure program. I should mention, you've got 13 teachers this current year who are taking licensure courses with us. Three... Two of them are enrolled in our reading specialist second certificate program, second license program. Two are involved in moderate... Three are moderate disabilities, and two in administrative work. So we've got seven of your teachers in licensure programs and 13 taking courses. Again, that's a nice service we provide. It's very amenable for working folks. We do online, et cetera, with that. So a couple of things I just want to mention, and I know I'm probably way out of time.
One moment. I think Mayor Martin has a question.
Mr. Deal?
Yes, please.
On the, I guess, professional development?
Yes.
Is that available for everyone other than district teachers or district administrators?
Is it available, you mean, for example, for school members?
School community members or residents of each different city or town?
It is, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, yep.
How...
Non-member rate.
Non-member rate. So I guess that's a good question. And so what is the rate and the member rate?
Well, so the non-member rate is typically 15% above the member rate for different services. And the services really vary in terms of what the charge is for them. We try as much as possible... I kind of skimmed over this, but part of our development work is to try to find grants that bring in free things for districts. So Title III is an example. We have a pretty active Teaching American History grant we've had for a while that your history teachers have taken advantage of, I believe, over time. It's all free courses there. So we try to do that as much as possible, but there is some fee for most of our courses, as well as for our tuition-based programs.
So the fee would then be paid by the district, not by the teacher?
By the district. In some cases, the teachers themselves, usually the district. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And I should mention that if you serve on the Board of Directors, you have free tuition, just the cost of materials. So I think you knew that, Susan, right? Okay, good.
What?
So let me mention two... Let me mention one other thing that I think is important to mention, which is that we are... Our membership, as well as the districts we work with in Berkshire County, Western... Worcester County and Hampton County are all... Almost all small and rural. So we work with the plurality of small and rural districts in the Commonwealth. And we increasingly have taken up kind of the mantle of being a voice for an educator about issues that affect our small and rural districts. So we've done a lot of research. We do position pa... Not position papers. We do education papers for our legislators around these issues. We have a couple of ones we've done, Mayor Martin, on the impact of charter schools. It's disproportionate impact in small and rural districts than it is in a Boston or Holyoke. So we don't necessarily say good or bad charter schools, but we want to make sure people know in rural and small areas, it has a greater impact. And we need to have some kind of regulations, laws to take that into account. If you guys lose a couple of students to Fort Rivers, that hurts a lot more than Boston losing a few kids to their charter school. That needs to be known. We also are doing a lot in terms of advocating for additional funding. Chapter 70, obviously, but also full reimbursement for transportation, for the circuit breaker, for ELL students, for homeless students, and so on. And it's in different states, as you know, going forward. We've had a couple of meetings that we hosted at the Collaborative. Most recently, Natalie Blaze and Joe Comerford, the Senator and Representative of you, helped us... Or actually, they pulled off a meeting at the Collaborative with the other representatives that brought out the co-chairs of the Education Committee. So Alice Peish and... Ah, I know his name. The Chair of the Senate.
Jason.
Jason, thank you. Yep. So they came out, and we had a wonderful... I don't know if they were wonderful. No, I don't know if Alice Peish would say they were wonderful. The first part of the meeting was all the superintendents in Franklin Hampshire that came to it and basically talked about key issues that were affecting us. And I think for both of them, there was a real education there. I think they both really took that away, and it was a really nice, engaging conversation. And then the superintendents left, and then we had a much larger group of people come in, school committee members, teachers, parents, et cetera. It was a nice mix of folks across the two different counties. And it was also a very engaging conversation, but there was a little more heated exchange in some cases. I think there are people who feel very... Really adamantly about funding, as they should. And I think Alice Peish especially was kind of surprised by the adamancy of some of our advocates, if you will. Nevertheless, it got across really well. We got good thank you notes. Jason stayed late. He stayed an extra hour and talked with people. I think we have some real good allies there. So that's something else we've kind of taken up the mantle for moving forward, just so you know that. And if we can help set things up... I know they both want to visit schools that they didn't visit already. I think they have, haven't they? Yeah. Yep. So that's... Any questions? So do you have anything that you would like to ask of the Collaborative, since serving your needs is our first priority? And we aren't from the state.
Member Hollins?
Although we work close... Very closely with them. We love their work, yeah. Anything?
I can't...
Member Hollins?
I can't speak for anyone but myself, but when I read the paper about declining enrollment in area schools, schools that have space, and I sit on our budget subcommittee where we talk often about the dramatic costs we have for specialty programs that are not in our county that our students need, and when they're not here, sometimes it's 50, 100, 200,000. I often think to myself, we have districts that have schools that need money, and we have students that need programs that we don't have. And I think I said the same thing last year.
Mm-hmm.
Would be great.
Yep.
You're probably already working on that, but it always seems to me, can we figure that out? Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's another role we think we are playing, is all of our districts are in financial difficulty, and the Chapter 70 formula is not going to do any of them a lot of good. Although Greenfield, you guys are making up pretty well, comparatively speaking. House Ways and Means came out, and I think another $200,000 in their budget for Chapter 70 for next year. So that's good, but nevertheless, it doesn't nearly make up the kind of need that you have, I recognize. So as Susan mentioned, one of the things we are aware of is your district... All districts are sending out kids with special needs to places that are pretty high-cost, and you get some money back from the circuit breaker. You send kids out there, and you pay for their transportation and get nothing back. That isn't counted in circuit breaker. So this is a student in Mohawk, for example, that Mike Brunnicati talks about a lot. They pay $100,000 to send them out of district, and they spend $100,000 for tuition. $200,000 for a student who needs... And we want to do that. I mean, we are dedicated to educating all kids. But it creates a financial burden that's really tough in these tough times. So Susan mentioned, we've been talking about, and at this point in time, we're talking very actively with Pioneer about setting up a couple of programs there to serve some of the kids who are being sent out of district.
Thank you for doing that, because I always think if we have schools that have a lot of classrooms, that's a great way to help them financially and help everybody else that needs these programs close by. Thank you.
And we welcome... If their ideas, for example, if you guys are aware of a particular student population, certain age, and certain type of disability, we can certainly look at developing things or work... Or I think, more importantly, work with the district in terms of developing something. I think the ideal scenario, frankly, is, for example, Greenfield sets up a program and tuition students in. We help them set up the program, but tuition students in. That's what Pioneer's looking at doing. I'm putting you on the spot, am I?
Member Ekstrom? I'm sorry. Did you have... Was... Did you want to respond?
I just want to say that we've appreciated the Collaborative's responsiveness to our needs. We always reach out to Bill. Matt and I have reached out on a couple of different programmatic ideas. One of the initiatives that we're working on right now, there are many. One has to do with social justice, restorative justice. That's been ongoing, but we continue to refresh and deepen that work. Another is, right now, looking at the special education programming in the middle school. And one way that we're able to work with the Collaborative at free or no cost is accessing state grants, again. And we have a day set up, working with Matt and working with the special ed directors at the Collaborative, to assess the impact of the special education programming at the middle school as part of the analysis that you heard about tonight. So understanding the impact of programming on the building, understanding the effectiveness of that programming, doing interviews with staff, understanding how investment in special education programming that is already in district actually pays dividends and actually pays for itself many times over, and trying to quantify exactly what is the impact of investment of dollars in district, in high-quality programs, for the students that are in seats right now, as opposed to waiting until their needs become so great that can't be served here, and they have to go somewhere else at triple or quadruple the price. That's something that the Collaborative has been a very responsive partner on. Matt has been working on actively. Another thing that we've been engaged in, at my request, Matt and I have been working with the Collaborative on paraprofessional or IA training. And we brought this to our principals last week. We're looking at a unique training program that would bring all instructional assistance through a core series of programs that really improve their skills and training and help them with on-the-job training, so that on day one of walking into the Greenfield Public Schools, they're getting supports, services, and common expectation and language to work with our students, and that that becomes more specialized as they work with more specialized populations. And then they can enter the classroom prepared to serve our students, and they become one of our most valuable assets. So that's something that we're working with the Collaborative right now.
Could I just add one thing, Superintendent? Greenfield actually is really being very active in the special education area, and you're to be commended, Matt, and so on, in that area. Because it really is one of the areas where there is some possibility of beefing up the program, serving kids better, and also finding ways of having some cost savings. The point is not cost savings, but the point is, can you do things in-house that really are effective for young people, which then serves everybody? And you're a leader in that area, yeah.
Member Ekstrom?
Oh.
Hi.
Hi.
So I know how the relationship is going to work with Pioneer, because I sit on the Board, and we've discussed it. I was just wondering if you could explain it to the committee members, because it's really interesting how Collaborative goes in and helps to set up programs.
I...
Can you explain it a little bit?
I can explain a little bit. It's still in the area of figuring out the fiscal part of getting it started. So basically, Pioneer, of course, has some empty classrooms, as you, I think you know, and identified a couple of different particular needs. One of the needs was for students who have been out of district in other kind of settings. It might be DYS. It might be a special education program. They're coming back in, and I think we know that if you just bring a child back in and And I think we know that if you just bring a child back in and drop them in a classroom, they're going to not succeed. And so it's a transition program for, for young people coming back from those kind of placements outside. A second area we're looking at is an intervention model for elementary, especially early elementary students. A lot of districts are really struggling with young children who are coming very dysregulated, and they basically can really have a major impact, negative impact on a classroom. You don't want to suspend them, you know, but teachers often don't have the wherewithal or the time, they've got 20 kids, to really deal with that. So it's a way of helping teachers with that. And we're looking at other things as well. But in both cases, the model is set up the program, Pioneer owns the program, and then other districts tuition kids into the program. So the other districts have a cost savings, because they're incenting kids far away out, and Pioneer has some income to help support the program. That's kind of the model that we're working on with Pioneer. Does that answer your questions?
For the most part, yeah. But I think it's important to mention that at whatever the determined point is, the Collaborative pulls themselves away from it entirely.
Right.
Because they have now done all the training and those things that were needed to support the teachers, and they are able to do that on their own.
Right.
And so I thought it was interesting for us to hear that, because it is a thoughtful model of how they do business, I'll say business, in general.
Thank you.
And I saw the Superintendent wanted to respond to this, and then I see Mayor Martin. Did you want to respond?
I, I want to say that I agree that the Collaborative puts forward a very sustainable model, and it works well. As an example, we sometimes evaluate whether a partnership with the Collaborative makes sense, and we appreciate their thought partnership even if we decide not to pursue that particular program. We had conversations with the Collaborative when we proposed the alternative school that we proposed and came before this committee and was voted at the Green River Program. I do want to say, in light of our budget conversation, that starting a new program is challenging in a budget cycle where you're fighting to keep positions. So I would ask that the committee be mindful of the need to invest in programming, and new programming, in order to make the kinds of investments that we're hearing and that everyone is discussing tonight as a commendable program model. We suggested such a program, but right now we're, I don't see any viable way to put forward, for example, the Green River Alternative Program that this committee voted, based on our current budget cycle. And that will be one of the very first things to go, because we would look to retain existing positions before adding new positions to the budget. So I do want to say again, we have to think deeply about if these types of models save money, are good for kids, are innovative, bring other students into the district and meet a need, we've got to find ways to fund these programs.
Mayor Martin.
The, we have out-of-district students, obviously, like most districts. And there is a couple of programs where the, the OOD residential school or academy, if you will, provides satellite instruction. So instead of going to their place, they come to your place. Does the HEC Academy do any of that at all, or is that in line with working with Pioneer, like?
What we do similar to that is, we have a lot of special education specialists who go out to the schools and support the schools. We don't have, like, HEC Academy doesn't have a satellite necessarily in Greenfield. We don't, we don't do that. It's worth thinking about.
Yeah. The, I noticed you're Franklin Hampshire, with the districts, and you have Berkshire Academy.
Right.
So how does that, that's like an outlier.
So, so North Adams approached us two years ago, more than that, about wanting to start a Collaborative there. Brookshires doesn't have anything. And we wrote, we wrote a grant to the Governor's Office and got a regionalization and grant from them to set up a Collaborative. And the, the plan was initially to set up an academy, special education academy, that then would become the basis of the Collaborative. So it would get established, it'd be income and so on. And so we did that. We had a very short time period, developed it. This is actually a good example of the model Susan was talking about. So five different districts in northern Brookshires came together and they said, we're going in this together, and we're going to share the risk, because there's a risk doing this. So they, it got opened. Initially, they were paying high tuition. As more students came, the tuition went down. It was a way of establishing it. This year, as of, I think, today, yesterday, I think the school committee in North Adams agreed to take it over themselves. So we no longer are running it. It's in a different county. We basically did that as a model, and also to help them get their feet off the ground for Collaborative.
Good, nice job. One last question. There's, there's been a report by the state auditor dealing with Chapter 76, Section 20, and everyone knows that regional districts are, are picking up a lot of students that are in transition, literally, and they're coming from one city to another and may stop in a regional center for a short period of time. So according to the law, that was always supposed to be reimbursed 100%.
Yep.
That changed in 1978.
Yep.
Actually, in 1978 is when they determine that the state shall pay 100%. Then 1981 or 82, when the, the education and formula change and the act changed, there, no city or town has been able to be reimbursed by the legislature. Does the academy actively pursue advocacy for the regional centers, districts that are paying, in our case, 700 to 800,000 dollars a year?
Uh, yes and no. We have to walk a fine line between advocacy and so on, so we educate primarily. But this, the couple of meetings I mentioned before with the legislators, what the Superintendents all decided we should focus on is Chapter 70, obviously. But more importantly for all of our districts was fully reimbursing the things the states said they would reimburse us for. And that, in fact, includes that. That gets us further in terms of helping our small and rural districts than just the Chapter 70.
Right, exactly. So your Franklin Hampshire regional centers are quite, from Chickaby to Holyoke to Greenfield and North Adams and Berkshire County, they are losing, or they are expending a huge amount of their financial resources for a program that the state says should be reimbursed 100%.
Right, right.
So it, it seems like Franklin Hampshire districts might finally agree through the, through the Collaborative to inform our representatives that, you know, this is not only unfair for Western Mass districts, but also for Eastern Mass districts as well.
Right. Yep, yep. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Bill.
You're welcome.
It's so great to have you here. I know that we've had some rescheduling that we've had for the past couple of months, so I appreciate your patience and thank you very much for coming. It's very helpful to have all of this information. In particular, I find the list of all the services that you're providing to Greenfield really, really helpful. It's really nice to just see a clear, simple depiction of the work that everyone is doing together, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you all for your support. Thank you, Jennifer.
And I want to take a moment to check in with Philippe. Philippe, I received word that there's not a live stream right now. Okay, just making sure you're aware. No pressure. Okay, and back to our business. I can't hear, would you like to use your mic?
We're having technical difficulties.
All right. Super.
Nothing on the net and the broadcast is if you're on TV.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so let's move on to our next agenda item, the filling of the vacant school committee seat. Okay, so as, if you recall, at our last meeting, we had several votes that resulted in ties. And the committee ended up tabling the issue until today or in future meeting to, in order to review process. And I want to thank Member Ekstrom for her assistance in reaching out to some key folks and doing some research on parliamentary procedure, the charter, and just process in general. And also, thanks to Kathy Scott, our city clerk, for helping as well. So in your packet, there's a couple of emails from Kathy, and Kathy has recommended a particular process for us today. She's recommending that the committee actually write down our votes, put the name of the candidate that we would like to elect into the vacant seat, also put our own name so that that can be clear and transparent, and then pass in the votes to a neutral party. I'm suggesting Ms. Susan Farber, who is our secretary. We do first need to take a vote on whether or not we want to actually utilize this process. The other two basic options are, we could go through what we went through last time, and someone could put forward a motion with the candidate's name, and we could also, we could vote in that fashion. Or we could simply have a roll call vote and go through and just verbally vote for who we want to see in, elected to the seat. I think that, given the recommendation from Clerk Scott, I think that writing down our votes is a great way to, to do it. That's just my opinion. And as well, if we do run into an impasse today, our charter here in Greenfield clearly, clearly states that the president of the council would have a vote if there is an impasse. Yes, Member Ward?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the clerk.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that is unanimous. So to translate that, we will be writing down our votes. I did bring some paper with a beautiful sunset. So everyone will take their ballot. And please write down your name and the name of the candidate that you would like to elect into the vacant seat.
The votes be public.
The votes will be made public. I did follow up with Kathy on that, and that's the second email that's in here, is that for transparency, we do, we will ask that Susan Farber not only tally the votes, but also read out who voted for whom. Thank you, Member Ward.
Yes.
Oh. You're going to find out in just a second. And President Reno is present here. Thank you, President Reno, for your patience, just in case we need an additional vote.
The vote is tied for three votes for Jean Wall and three votes for Glenn Johnson.
Okay, so just to put that into the microphone, Susan Farber has announced that there are three votes for Jean Wall and three votes for Glenn Johnson. Can you tell us who voted for whom?
I can tell you.
Just for the record.
I can tell you for the record.
Thank you, Susan.
Voting for Jean Wall, Susan Hollins, Bill Martin, and Cam Ward. Voting for Glenn Johnson, Katie Karen, Adrian Nunez, when they lost a ballot, that would be Susan Ekstrom.
Thank you, thank you, Susan. Yes, Member Hollins.
Could you clarify if there's any discussion among committee members before we seek an additional vote?
I am, I mean, I think we should just move forward.
What was the question?
Member Hollins is asking if she can make a comment. Are you?
Not that if I can. I'm asking about process, will there be any opportunity for discussion before asking for another vote?
So generally, generally to start discussion, we have a motion on the table. There's no motion on the table. We just went through the voting process. It's my understanding now that we will move on to President Reno and allow her to cast a vote. President Reno, please join us. For those that may be watching, I did forward President Reno the packet from our last month's meeting. That includes any letters of interest, resumes, et cetera. So she has been provided that information and may have watched the meeting, I'm not sure. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I want to apologize for how casually I'm dressed. This was, coming to this meeting was my workout, was part of my workout, so. So, yeah, that's right. But I mean no disrespect, I, I should have worn something better. So I, I had thought about this, and I decided that the vote I would cast would be the same vote as the chair of the school committee. And so that would be for Glenn Johnson. Before I even knew who the school committee chair was going to vote for, because I feel it is very, very important to support the chair in this decision. I trust the chair, and I follow her lead on this. And I trust your judgment, your knowledge, and your leadership. And I thank you for your service. I know being chair is not easy. I'm not called chair, I'm called president, but it's a very hard job. It's impossible to please everybody, and you're often felt like you're caught in the middle of a lot. And I feel particularly so for you lately, and, and want to just express that I support you 100%. I believe in you, and your departure from town government is going to be a huge loss for all of us. So I cast my vote for Glenn Johnson, and I thank the rest of the committee. And I thank you for the work you do. I know that being on school committee is going to be really hard. It's all the, the, the work and none of the glory of the town council. So if you can call it that, thank you.
Wow, thank you, President Reno. That was very unexpected, and I appreciate the words of encouragement, and I would extend those words to the entire committee. I know that we all care very deeply about the well-being of all of our students and providing a high-quality education to each of our students, and I see that in the work that we do, even when we have difficult meetings. So, thank you. And I'll invite Mr. Glenn Johnson to join us at the table. There is an additional chair here, and Mayor Martin has prepared to swear you in immediately to join the team.
Mr. Johnson, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Martin.
Say after me, aye, and aye.
Aye, Glenn Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Perform and discharge the duties of the office.
Of school committee member.
Of school committee member.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
I state your name.
I, Glenn Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And the Charter of the City of Greenfield.
And the Charter of the City of Greenfield.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone. I want to take a moment to thank all four of our candidates for putting their name in the pool. And it's, it's quite noteworthy to see four highly qualified candidates come forward willing to volunteer their time in support of the Greenfield Public Schools and join us here at the table, especially in the midst of a pretty intense budget conversation. So thank you, all of you, for putting your name in. And welcome, Glenn. Superintendent, did you have a comment?
I was going to say something similar. I'll start by saying, please follow super underscore GPS. I'm live tweeting out your first photo now. But my, my comment was really to thank all the candidates, especially with a two-meeting process. Job interviews are agonizing, giving public remarks are agonizing. I think you've had the most protracted possible version of both of those things put together over a two-month period. For those of you that were interested in providing your service on behalf of the students and staff and families of the Greenfield Public Schools, I just want to thank you and welcome to our new member.
Yes, Member Ekstrom.
I just want to say, please go take out papers and run. There's this little thing called an election going on in November, and I actually have to take out papers to do that as well, which means you go down and get papers, and you get 100 people to sign their name on them. So please do, I encourage you.
Thanks, Member Ekstrom. Okay, so we are on to our fourth business item. This is special education, transportation, purchase, and vote. Ed and Steve, I'm not sure if you'd like to come down, and just in case we have questions or introduce the topic. Did I see your hand, Member Hollins?
One more.
Oh, sure. Member Hollins, go for it.
I move to approve the proposal discussed at the May 8th, 219 meeting, which was reviewed and unanimously supported by the subcommittee, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and refer new proposals if presented tonight to the Budget Subcommittee.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, actually?
I move to approve the proposal, transportation proposal discussed at the May 8th, 219 meeting, which was reviewed and unanimously supported by the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, and refer a new proposal if presented tonight to the Budget Committee.
Do you have a new proposal?
Okay.
The reason I worded it that way? Well, there's no second.
Is there a second? Okay, so motion fails, there's no second. Let's open the floor. Superintendent, would you like Steve and Ed to, or do you want to introduce the topic?
So at the last school committee meeting, we presented information about a cost-saving proposal for transportation, in particular, special education transportation. We're beginning with a proposal that is a modest pilot of this. It starts with the purchase of three vans. There's significant cost savings from this operation, but there is, I think, further work to be done as we continue to roll out this proposal. The costs of working with private vendors are both volatile in that they fluctuate, and they are unpredictable in that if a new student moves in, that cost can escalate very quickly. I want to thank Ed. Ed has been with us as a transportation coordinator for not very long, but he really dug into this particular area quickly. Steve has done a lot of the background to bring forward this proposal. And we have already built a transportation department that's prepared to serve the needs of our students better, more safely, and at less expense to the district. The point of all of that is it returns more dollars to the classroom. I asked you to support this proposal. It came up at the last committee meeting, it came up in the It came up in the Superintendent's report. It was asked to be vetted thoroughly at the Budget and Finance Subcommittee level. A month has gone by. In that period of time, Budget and Finance had significant time to look at it, and it's back in front of you tonight. It's the same information, and we ask that you endorse it.
Okay, I move to approve the purchase of three special education vans at a total cost of $93,779, with $70,000 to be paid from the transportation capital account, and the remainder to be paid from out-of-district transportation.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, Mayor Martin. It's actually written on here at the very bottom of the page. Thank you for providing the language. It's very helpful, especially in writing for the Secretary.
Just quickly, at the Budget Subcommittee, we discussed getting three bids for best business practices, and you agreed, obviously. In addition, the estimated savings was changed from $350,000 to $225,000?
That's correct, yeah. It's less the cost, yeah.
Okay. And to clarify, is the savings already calculated in the FY '20 budget?
There is a modest savings within the F...I'm sorry. There is a savings calculated in the FY '20 budget. But to expand upon that, we've already had meetings with surrounding school districts who are wanting to...for us to transport some of their kids at a fee. So the savings, I believe, will be greater, as well as the revenue generation will be greater.
Any estimates on the revenue generation?
Revenue generation, we're looking at six kids already at about $20,000 a pop, so $180,000 or so.
Okay, thank you.
From other districts?
From other districts, yes.
Any additional comments or questions? Member Hollins?
I just want to say that I was noticing, and we had a long discussion about the three vans, as you know. There was unanimous support. There's another part, which is what I was trying to get at, which was briefly mentioned, but we didn't discuss at length, which was replacing seven or eight other vans, financing it. We...our committee hasn't discussed that part of the proposal.
Yeah, I can expand upon that.
I was just explaining that we hadn't discussed that, but the motion doesn't address that, so it's good.
No, and what we're planning on doing is bringing that to the next Budget Finance Subcommittee, so we can vet that a little more with you guys. Yeah, go ahead.
If I might, I just want to send this out ahead of time for you to think about. Our fleet, our aging fleet, is really aging. I'm operating every day with every piece of equipment that we have now, and where the lights, the bells, the significant issues that are coming up with these older 130,000-mile vehicles is becoming very apparent. And that's part of this process, is to replace some of the bigger buses with vans that are cheaper, more efficient to run, easier to train people to drive, and certify them. And I think overall, it'll make the transition as we go forward much easier.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Okay, are we all clear on the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe...anyone opposed? Abstention? Okay, I believe that was unanimous. Thank you. And then just as a formality, I'll state that, you know, we will refer to Subcommittee any additional conversation that needs to go to Subcommittee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So our next item is a potential recommendation to the Council to raise the FY '20 school budget. I've included in the Chair's timed agenda some notes about Massachusetts general law. There's also...the law is also in your packet here. And according to MGL Chapter 4432, "The City Council may vote to increase the School Department appropriation above the level recommended in the Mayor's budget by a two-thirds vote of the Council upon recommendation of the School Committee." So that means that if we would like the Council to consider raising the School Department budget, we need to put forward that recommendation to them. And this is really important right now because...there are several reasons, of course. But one of the main reasons that's driving me to bring this to the table tonight is that we do anticipate some additional Chapter 70 money over the Governor's budget coming to Greenfield. And it appears through conversation with Mayor Martin, Finance Director Gilman, Superintendent Harper, and also our Business Manager, Steve Nembrecow, that the process in order to access any additional Chapter 70 funding to be seen in the operational budget would essentially be to reflect it in the budget now. That is my understanding. So although there may not be a specific number that we know right away that we would like to request from the Council, this is our opportunity to put forward a formal request. There will be additional Ways and Means discussions tomorrow and the following week. I believe that the public hearing for the budget is set for the 22nd? I thought the vote was on the 22nd. I believe that the public hearing is on the 15th. I could be mistaken. And the final vote on the city budget is scheduled for the 22nd of May. Superintendent, would you like to comment further? I think I just really just touched on one item, one aspect here. Did you have any additional commentary?
I'd like to ask Steve to just comment on the room in the levy limit, based on your understanding of the budget, the School Department's request at this time, and as it relates to the School Committee voted budget. You put forward a memo that's in the packet that addresses this, and if you could briefly speak to that, and then I'll go from there.
Sure. When we look at the budget in its entirety, as well as the city budget, there is...in fact, the Mayor's budget points us out very succinctly is that if the City Council were to fund the full $19.7 million, there would be about $600,000 left within the levy limit. If the City Council were to fund the school budget at the $18.6 million level, there would be about $2.4 million left in the levy limit. So what that means is that over the course of the years, the levy limit has increased, but it has not been taxed, allowing room for future growth within the levy limit. So therefore, if the City Council chooses to increase the budget in any amount up to the $19.7 million number, it would not require an override or anything like that. It would just require use of that levy limit going forward.
Thank you, Steve. I see Member Hollins, and then I see Mayor Martin.
I'll defer to Mayor Martin first.
Mayor Martin.
Unless he doesn't want me to.
Sure, yes. Steve, now, there is an excess levy limit because over the past several years, the entire 2.5% that was allowed without a vote...excuse me, without a vote override or a vote by the Council, the money was saved, and the pressure and increase from the taxpayer was saved. So that has resulted in an excess levy limit today of about a little over $2.4 million. So we agree on that. The budget as prepared and submitted to the Town Council, City Council has been recapped and shows a tax rate of $22.96, $22.96. Any use...because the levy limit of $2.4 million was not used, any use of that money would be a surcharge on all property owners. So if a million dollars was used, if $200,000 was used, it would be in addition to the tax rate. It would be new money to be raised, because even though it's an excess levy limit, there is no real cash. It's just a formula, much like Chapter 70. So I think the Committee should realize that, that it's an automatic increase for property taxpayers. There might and probably are other options to fitting the proposed budget for the School Department into its operations. How we do that is up to the Superintendent and the Business Manager. And any reduction to...and I presented to the Council, any reduction within the budget of $52 million would have to come from some other department. Any funds taken from any other department is going to result in a loss of material and resource or a loss of employee. So it is not an easy...not an easy decision. We spoke earlier tonight of trying to do something with what we have, and that's what the budget message, that's in the budget book that I wrote, indicates the same thing, that we're trying to create a budget with the resources we know we have. And I'll speak later to potential new revenues in six, eight, 10 months.
Yeah, and what I'd like to add to that is, is that in order for the City Council to entertain any type of future options, I believe that a vote would be in order for them to fund us at a greater amount in order to...in order to consider those other options.
Thank you, Mayor Martin, and thank you, Steve, for the response. It's my understanding that, as Steve just indicated, in order to access any additional Chapter 70 funding, as the Mayor has suggested through his proposal to provide 70% of any additional Chapter 70 funding over the Governor's budget that's included in the Mayor's budget at this time, we would need to be incorporating that now as well. It is my understanding, through reading the Massachusetts general law and memos that have been provided to the Committee, that the Council does not have to take from other departments. And as an individual member of this Committee, I strongly advocate against taking from other departments. Instead, I would look to areas where we may potentially be overbudgeted, including health insurance, where figures were estimated at a higher rate to...and we now have completed that negotiation, and those rates are lower. So there is some room there, as well, if the City of Greenfield receives additional Chapter 70 funding, that money would offset any tax increases to, or some, or possibly all of any tax increases that our citizens would see with any additional funding added to our budget in this capacity. I saw Member Ward, and I saw Superintendent. I'll start with Member Ward, and then Superintendent.
Excuse me. I had been recognized before, but I defer to Mayor Martin.
You gave the floor to the Mayor. Are you...okay, are you okay with Member Hollins going first?
Yes.
Okay, Member Hollins?
Thank you. I support going...some motion for the City Council, and I support more funding than we have. Strongly support that. In reviewing it, I found that there are maybe six or seven possibilities for increasing our funding other than the levy limit, which has to do with taxation. So I'd like to just mention them because I don't understand the exact process or timeline for accessing these. For one, there's a special ed stabilization fund. I don't know the exact amount. I think it has about $250,000, which is replenishable with certified free cash that we could use. There's a contract stabilization fund. There's a general stabilization fund. The Mayor advised us at our Subcommittee meeting that there has recently been a sale of town-owned land. I think he said it was $100,000 for miscellaneous land, and then $350,000 for something else, but it's in our taped meeting, and that that money also has a different way to access but is available for use. There's free cash that's certified, and I believe at our meeting, our Subcommittee meeting, was mentioned that two years are being closed out, which will give two years' worth of free cash, and when it's certified, that's available for use. And then there's the discussion of increased additional Chapter 70 aid and how that could come to us. And there's a bill, I think it's HB 481, to address this year the amount of charter school reimbursement. And if that bill went through, which would...I don't know the status, but anyway, it could be as much as $500,000 or $600,000. And then there is the possible modification of our own budget if we find something in our budget or the City's budget. So all I wanted to say is it looks like there are options for supplemental appropriations and commitments of use of stabilization funds that could be replenished by free cash in addition to the levy limit provision, which does add to the taxation rate. And I would like to do something. I'm not...I just think people should know that there's more than one option for us getting more money. Thank you.
Point of privilege? Member Hollins mentioned my name. I'm allowed to speak.
I think she first said Cam Warren.
So...
Go ahead.
The...there are a number of different options. I'm afraid they're in different time periods, though. So you can only prepare a budget with the known revenues, and that's where we were on March 31st of this year. There might be, and you can't spend money you don't have. And so if there are funds available toward the end of the year, it's a calendar process. Because of problems in the accounting office the past couple of years, we are...we just finished FY '17, closing the books in October, November of 2018. We just recently closed the books, hopefully for FY '18. We hope to have those sent to the Department of Revenue by the June 30th of this year. And then on July 15th, we will begin closing the books for FY '19. So there will be an opportunity to have two years' closing within the same period and looking for the certified free cash. The certified free cash can't be spent between June 30th or July 1st until it's certified with Department of Revenue. That's why supplemental budgets come in at the end of that certification process. So that's a possibility. But unless there's a strategy, a financial strategy for the School Department or the City, and I'm not aware of one, to have a larger budget than what has been presented or been financed and funded, then you can't spend that money there. Just one last comment on the free cash. It's made up of a number of different things, some that are recurring, some that are nonrecurring. So that's why it all gets lumped into the general fund as free cash. So to spend that after, at some point in time, is possible, because it then has to be sustained in future years in the budget. One of the issues we're facing today and tonight is that the $400,000 allocated to the School Department last year had no source of funding. So the funding had to be found, again, to replicate that $400,000 in this year's budget, FY '20, plus moving on to other increases that were called for. The opportunity to move another stabilization fund from all of the various accounts that the City and the School has is...puts the City in peril next year. So it just rolls this boulder down the mountain. So I think there are some options, and whatever the options the School Committee comes up with this evening, that will be reviewed by the City Council. And just one last comment. I think Steve is right that the Council cannot act without a recommendation from the School Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. That is why this issue is before us here today. What I am asking for is a simple motion to actually allow this conversation to proceed at the Council table. Can it wait for Member Ward? He has...okay. Member Ward yields to the Superintendent. No, he's clearly yielding.
So didn't we...haven't we already approved as a full committee 19-9 or 19-7?
Yes.
Okay. So what is this, like a pretty please?
Yes.
Yes.
This is in order to... This is in order to allow...
I mean, what are we doing here? We're wasting a lot of time.
Yes.
This is time that we are just, I mean, we're, we were serious about the 19-9, that we voted.
Yes.
We took the vote.
Yes, so...
Make a motion, then, to say that vote was real, we really meant it.
And we recommend that to council.
Again.
Okay. Is there a second?
But that's...
Is that a motion? It is.
I think I said motion.
Yes.
Did I say motion?
No, no, it really...
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Miss, Member Johnson.
We can keep discussing.
Okay, let's hear from the superintendent, and then we'll continue our discussion on this. Superintendent.
All right, great, thank you. So I, I actually agree with Member Ward on this. So I asked Steve to lead off, and then I intended to present the, the second part of this, which I think will bring some clarity. I think the intent of the vote that the committee could choose to take tonight, very similar to what Member Ward has just put forward, essentially affirms that the committee's vote to pass a budget at the number that you voted for FY '20 stands, even though the mayor's budget presents a number that's less than that, and that the committee wishes for the council to consider funding up until the amount of the committee's budget. So at this point, the, this committee can't dictate how much the committee, sorry, the council funds, but it can just simply ask that it consider funding up until the amount of the school committee budget. I'd like to propose two things, one, a correction, and two, a way forward. The correction is, I really want to make sure we're clear, that we, as the school department, are not asking the council to cut from other budgets. We are asking that they consider ways that are within their authority to fund the school department budget. And the correction here is that the mayor has pointed out that he himself has negotiated a health insurance rate that's at 2.5%, and on page 49 of his budget book, he's put forward a budgeted amount that was higher than that, because this was put forward before those rates were negotiated, around 4.3%. And the mayor has identified that that results in at least $70,000 of savings in that one line already alone. That's $70,000 of savings that doesn't take from police, fire, library, anywhere else, DPW, anybody else in Greenfield, that could, that's already accounted for in a balanced budget, that could be returned to the school department, that could be used to fund teachers, paraprofessionals, custodian, nurses, it's Nurses Day, we could fund a nurse with that. All right, so what we're looking for is, to Member Hollins' point, creative ways to fund the budget that the school committee has already voted. Second, the business manager and I, in the couple of weeks since this budget have come out, have been working to find a plan that moves us towards that, and we're working to put forward a proposal. This might include a, a series of cuts, this might include ways that we've identified, like that $70,000, and we're looking to identify ways to put that forward. But at this point, it's really in the hands of council as to where and what they want to do. So I, I'm asking that the committee vote, as Member Ward put forward, a vote to affirm the school committee's budget up to the amount that was already voted. And please understand that Steve and I are working very hard to identify new revenue, including the new Chapter 70 already coming, looking at reserves and any other ways that we can move forward. And we'll bring that back to this committee.
Member Hans.
Could I ask Member Ward if he'd accept a friendly amendment to his motion?
Let me hear it.
A second part that says, "And we request the city council fund the voted budget by whatever means available without cutting other departments."
Yes.
Susan Farber, could you read back what you have right now as the motion?
The motion is that the vote to approve the $19.9 million budget was real, and we really meant it, and we recommend it to council again, and we request the city council fund the voted budget by whatever means available without cutting other departments.
That's very confusing.
I love the style.
You may wish to consider the language that was put forward in the law and recommended by the city finance director.
Do we have a sample motion?
That's an alternative to what you just heard.
Speak to the motion.
Yes, Mayor Martin.
So I assume with the friendly amendment to the motion, and the acceptance by the person who made the motion, it's been accepted. And I don't see it as that contrary. Basically, I see it as a confirmation of what the superintendent has just said. There's no intention on the school committee to cut from other departments. And the superintendent is also correct on certain items within the line budget that have changed since March 31st, and health insurance is one of them. So we've reduced the cost of health insurance. And there, there are probably some other items in the budget that has changed too, under the miscellaneous section. But I want, we should be all informed when we make, when we make our votes, is that if, say, just say it's $70,000 within the health insurance, and the $70,000 is transferred to the school department, and a nurse is hired, this is Nurses Week, we hire a nurse at $70,000. Then the health insurance just went back up again, the nurse chooses family plan, and it just went back up $18,000. Medicare just went back up in the miscellaneous item. So there's a ripple effect for whatever may happen in the school department, because the city pays for all the other expenses. So when we make this vote, consider that maybe the transfer should have been 52 instead of 70. Or maybe it should be 70, understanding that maybe there's a little buffer in the health insurance, and somebody else will retire later on. So those are the facts. Sometimes it's hard to, you know, calculate them, or project the calculation, but that's what has to be considered by, by everyone involved in putting the budget together, the recap, and, and starting a new operating budget July 1st.
Member Johnson, and then Member Karen.
I guess, I can't find, if there is in our packet something about, like, specific language that's been proposed, I can't, there, there isn't.
I don't believe that there is any specific proposed language for a motion
Okay.
in our packet.
I, I guess I, I don't know the exact language, but I do think that we should edit the existing language to give it the same, the same intent, but maybe something that sounds a little bit more formal. And I don't know what that might be.
Thank you, Member Karen.
I guess not really necessary, but I don't think, I guess I'm not, I don't mean to speak with Superintendent, I don't think she's actually suggesting we hire a brand-new nurse at $70,000. I think she was saying, please, let's not let the one go that we might have had to let go if we didn't have the $70,000. So it's not a new insurance cost or a new Medicare cost, that's already figured into the numbers. So I don't think anybody was suggesting, let's hire brand-new people, since we aren't sure we can afford the ones we have. I just want to make that clear.
Actually, Member Karen is correct, and the opposite is true. Because our budget is only balanced if we lay off employees, and their insurance costs are actually already budgeted in the mayor's balanced budget right now, if we were to lay off, it would in fact generate an excess that's the budgeted cost of those employees who have already then been laid off.
That's correct.
Call the vote.
Okay, so Member Hollins calls the question. Could you repeat the motion again?
That the vote to approve the $19.9 million budget was real, and we really meant it, and we recommend it to council again, and we request the city council fund the voted budget by whatever means available without cutting other departments.
Thank you. Final comment.
My, my concern about this is the phrase "other department"...
There's no conversation after a call to vote.
Okay.
Was there a call to vote?
Yes, by Member Hollins.
Thank you. My concern is that may not be possible.
Okay, it's okay.
I'm not debating.
Um...
Right.
Can you, can you repeat it one more time, I'm sorry? Yes.
That the vote to approve the $19.9 million budget was real, and we really meant it, and we recommend it to council again, and we request the city council fund the voted budget by whatever means available without cutting other departments, and there's a different number.
Mayor Martin reminded me that we need to vote on calling the question. Is that true? Let's go for it, do we want to vote on calling the question? All is in favor of calling the question. That means we, all is in favor of moving the question to a vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to moving the question to a vote?
Aye.
970.
Okay. All those abstain, abstain, anyone abstaining, abstaining, pardon me. Okay, what were you, Susan?
I was, I was the mayor and camera.
Okay, so it's, it looks like we, the majority of us do not want to call the question, that there's further discussion. I see Member Ward.
It was just concerning that it seemed like that there was some more to be said.
So...
As much as I want this to go away, and, and let's move the meeting along, I don't want to infringe on somebody that might have wanted to add something.
Thank you, Member Ward. My concern is that the, the proposed motion is a bit limiting, because I would like the council to have the ability, some flexibility in their deliberation. It looks like the superintendent is working on some draft language. Yes, Mayor Martin.
Thank you. In relation to the comments by the superintendent, she is correct that if people are not working, then there will be some type of deduction in some form, maybe from health insurance. But if they're not working, there'll be an increase in unemployment insurance, so, which is also another item that the, the city pays for. So it's hard to create and craft a budget that, that looks at the what mites, what might happen, what might, what might we lose, what might we gain, so that's why the budgets are made in a snapshot moment, and with all the information and resources available at that time. There might be fluctuations, there usually are in a number of different items. For instance, in some departments, including the school department, if there's a funded position, and that position is vacant, then that, at the end of the year, there is still the money available. If the person should retire, and it takes two or three months to replace him, and in any other departments we have, then there's usually funds left over in that particular line on them, salaries and wages in the, in that department. So it's, it's hard to predict and project what might happen in the next 12 months, starting July 1st. But to the best of everyone's ability, and, and a very conservative, conservative perspective of revenues and expenses, the budget's put forth to the council. And the superintendent, again, is correct, in that it's the council's choice to amend, modify, reject, and move monies from any department to the school department. But in no way can they take money from the school department and move it to another department within the city. So I think with the declaration by the committee that we do not want to cut from any other departments, the amendment to the, this motion, that makes clear sense, and reaffirms to the council the position of the school committee.
I see the superintendent.
I might recommend that the committee entertain a motion similar to, "I move to ask that the city council fund the FY '20 school department budget up to the amount of the school committee budget, $19,970,000, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, and the Greenfield City Charter."
Member Ward, it was your motion, um...
Sorry for this question.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
I'll call the question.
We're still on the original motion.
Still what?
We're still on the original motion.
Right, so I'm calling the question, we've all had enough time to speak.
Do we want to vote on this motion? Are we ready to call the question? All those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Wait, are we going to reword it or not?
All those opposed to calling the question?
Opposed.
Okay. I'm, I'm opposed, but I'll just clarify, if we call the question, we can actually
just kill, we can kill the motion, or you can withdraw your motion, and we can reword it.
I like Cam's motion.
I like Cam's motion, too, but...
I like Cam's motion.
But I actually, wait a second, so, but I, I fully support the superintendent's recommendation, I think it's clear, I don't want us to get sort of disqualified for any kind of confusion, I think we should just be sending it to the council, very clear, it's helpful to cite the MGL, and leave it at that. So I saw a couple of different hands.
If they're suggesting we change the language, it's fine. What the mayor said was not quite clear, that if we call this, we call the original motion, and we say, "Don't take money from other departments," they still can do whatever they want, even if we've made that clear, right? Okay.
Yes, the council has the authority to do what they're going to do.
Right.
Member Ward.
But the original motion, as opposed to this motion, enforces the fact that this committee is asking the council to do it without touching other budgets.
We would prefer they don't touch other budgets, but they can't.
This motion does not have that.
So, the only, and, and I, I hear that, I think we could add on to this motion. My hesitation with the original motion is that it implies that we're requesting all of the funding, which I would love to receive, loud and clear, I would love to receive all of that funding to balance our budget. However, in the event that the council wants to have some deliberation and have some flexibility with it, it provides them the flexibility to potentially give us some money, but maybe not the entire difference. Does that make sense?
No, they do that anyways. I mean, that, we're not, what are you suggesting, because we're asking for 19-9, that they can't give us 19-2?
I think that that may come up in conversation, because it may be unclear to them.
They didn't ask for 19-2, we can't do that. I mean, that just doesn't make any sense.
I don't want it to be presented as an all or nothing.
Well, that we can go up to, is that what this is?
Yeah.
Can you do this up to with the friendly amendment?
I think we could. Superintendent.
I may be wrong, but I, I think that this committee's job is to affirm that we would like the budget that this committee passed to move to the council. And right now, the mayor's budget is in front of the council. How the council does that is up to them. If you want to express a preference, I think that's fine, but if you say no departments, technically, everything in the mayor's budget is in a department, including health insurance, am I right? So my concern is that you're going to make it impossible for them to find savings, and then you're going to make them increase the tax rate much higher than is necessary. So it's a good intention, but I think, keep it simple. The committee would like to affirm the vote of this committee for the budget, for FY '20, and the council can do that as they see fit. The council is, it's their responsibility to do that in the most prudent way that they can. And, and they can happily watch this deliberation.
Member Johnson.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to edit the existing motion, and replace it with the language that Jordana read earlier, or that was read earlier.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, Cam withdraws his motion. Do you want to put forward?
I just don't like your amendment.
Okay. Member Johnson.
I move to ask the city council to fund the FY '20 school department...
Is that, that's right, right?
I... Oh, correct, yes.
Do you withdraw your second? Yes, you do?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
I withdraw the second to the motion.
Thank you.
I move to ask the city council to fund the FY '20 school department budget up to the amount of the school committee budget, $19,970,000, in accordance of MGC, Chapter 44, Section 22, and the city charter.
Yeah, I believe it was MGL, but, yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen, I see Susan Farber. Yes.
Exact amount.
Okay. Okay.
May I amend it for that? Yeah.
Okay. That works for you, Kitty?
Yep.
Great. Okay, could you read it back to us with the value added in? Susan, sorry, thank you.
To ask that the city council fund the FY '20 school department budget...
To ask that the city council fund the FY '20 school department budget up to the amount of the school committee budget of $19,970,347, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, and the Greenfield City Charter.
Okay, any further discussion? Yes, Mayor Martin?
I'd like to know if Member Glenn-
Johnson?
I know, I know. Would accept a friendly amendment, and to include that with the revolving funds exceeding $2.5 million and income of $900,000 in the next 12 months of the fiscal year, consider $600,000 from revolving funds now to help balance the budget.
Yeah, you can respond.
I don't accept the amendment.
Okay.
We were able to hear the superintendent well enough.
What?
Thank you. Did you get all of that, Susan? Let me repeat. I requested that a friendly amendment, considering that the current balance now of over $2.5 million in revolving funds, $2.5 million of revolving funds, and estimated revenue in the next 12 months of that fiscal year, 20, of $900,000, that the school committee allocate $600,000 from existing funds to balance the budget.
Okay, so I'm, Member Hollins?
Member Glenn?
He said no, right?
Oh, I thought he was going to say it again.
Oh, okay. You do not accept the amendment, is that correct?
I do not accept the amendment.
Thank you.
I was hoping, as part of this discussion after the motion, we could talk about alternatives to how we have discussed cuts. And this came up at our subcommittee meeting, it's relevant to the motion and what the mayor just said. And I was asked to provide that information after our meeting to the business manager. I checked with the attorney general's office, said if I did that, it would be an OML violation, so I could provide that at the meeting. So I hope this discussion isn't a lot about how we're making cuts, or cuts we're needing to make, that would be a different discussion. But does the new motion include, by any means available? Is there something about that in the motion? Because there are multiple options for the city council to address additional funding.
And I believe that's up to the city council.
I understand that, but in the first motion, we got rid of, there was some comment about by using whatever means available, not only-
I, I think that's implicit in the, in the motion, because it's up to the city council.
I understand, I was asking the secretary if that's part of the motion, I'm sorry.
You were looking at me, I saw.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're in my line of-
I'm in the way.
I just can't remember the new motion.
So I think that we're overthinking this, and I think that we're forgetting about our role, which is, we have significant conversation that will be, need to be had, about how we will balance the budget. And what we're doing today is we're allowing the council the opportunity to potentially give us additional funding over the mayor's proposed budget. That's what we're doing today. It's actually fairly simple. We're opening up that opportunity, and there will be more time to deliberate further. And I do want to kind of reiterate what the superintendent said earlier, that depending upon what numbers we're working with, we will have to look at a multi-pronged approach to ensuring that our students are getting the education that they deserve in this upcoming year. I, Member Johnson?
I move to call the vote.
Okay, all those in favor of calling the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I believe that's unanimous. Okay, so could you read back the motion on the table and we'll vote?
To ask that the city council fund the FY '20 school department budget up to the amount of the school committee budget of $19,970,347, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, and the Greenfield City Charter.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and I don't think there are any abstentions, is that correct? Okay, so motion passes. Thank you all, thanks for your patience and the conversation.
Have we concluded the discussion of the FY '20 budget for today?
Yes, the discussion is a recommendation to the city council to raise the FY '20 school budget. So the next business item, hopefully should be quick. There is, we need to assign two school committee members to be a part of the Unit A SIC Bank Committee. I just want to start with any volunteers, are there any folks that would like to volunteer to do this?
Explain what that is a little bit?
Yeah, so there's an excerpt of the Unit A contract that's in your packet. It's, looks like this, it says 21 at the bottom. Yeah, and I also just, I just want to reiterate my apology from earlier, that there are notes in the timed agenda that direct you to materials, and given that that wasn't in your packet, I can see how it would be a little bit confusing. So yes, in the Unit A contract, there is opportunity for our Unit A employees to access a SIC Bank. You can see all the steps here. In order to access any leave that's in the SIC Bank, there is a SIC Bank Committee. And we, you'll see a number four, F4 on page 21. One member is designated by the superintendent, two members of the teachers' association, and two members of the school committee are on the SIC Bank Committee. So I think that this will likely entail a couple of meetings.
I volunteer.
Thank you, Member Johnson. Would anyone else like to volunteer? Member Karen? Is there, yes, Mayor Martin?
Just, the SIC Bank, are we sure this is legal? It's been in the contract, but there's supposed to be a balance, so we should have a number as to what number of sick days and the liability to the town is also to the city. There's also a prohibition anti-aid amendment, that we cannot provide funds for such type of banks. And I would also suggest that the school department, for reporting purposes, needs to maintain a compensated absence balance, because it's on our, our balance sheet, so. We just recently had that conversation with the business manager, and that was unavailable at that time, so. I can't support this, not knowing its legal status. Even though it's in a contract that's been ratified, it may not, always state law supersedes contracts. So I, I'd like to get clarification from the attorney on the ability of this entity to hold the city liable for time and money.
Okay, so I hear you moving to request attorney review of our Unit A sick leave bank.
Second.
Okay, that was a motion by Mayor Martin, just FYI. Seconded by Member Ward. Is there any discussion? It sounds like, in, in the superintendent's absence, I think she's just gone to the bathroom. Do you have additional information?
The, the mayor's right, these SIC Bank provisions have come under review. I believe this one is fairly old, and I think it will be thoroughly reviewed in the next negotiation cycle. But as a new twist, we are liable for any unused SIC Bank balance. I've never seen a SIC Bank that involves the school committee as part of the deliberation process, so I think it'd be prudent to get a, a, a opinion, at least from Gordon or, or Peter, going forward, and this could be a piece of our negotiation going forward.
Okay, I just want to point out that it's, in the contract, it says effective 2014, that's only five years old. What you missed is a question about whether or not it's legal to have a sick leave bank. And the mayor has put forward a motion to inquire with the attorney, and it has been seconded by Member Ward. As well, Member Johnson and Member Karen have volunteered to be representative for the sick leave bank. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to request attorney opinion on the sick leave bank. Any further deliberation on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that was unanimous. So we will do that. In the meantime, though, I do want us to accept the appointment of Member Johnson and Member Karen as potential representatives of the school committee. I say potential, so that we don't have to go through this again. I'm seeing a yes and everything. So anyone opposed to that, we can just have consensus that, okay. You're good, great. Okay, so we will move on to school choice seats. Superintendent?
Thank you. Every year, we adhere to the school choice law, which includes looking closely at available seats that may, we may wish to advertise for a lottery for students in neighboring districts to attend Greenfield Public Schools. As we've discussed in the past, there's quite a lot of interest in neighboring districts coming into Greenfield to take advantage of our brand-new high school, our arts and elective programs, our terrific teachers, and our close-knit community. Now, in front of you, you have the available seats that we would like to offer for students from neighboring districts. These students need to provide their own transportation to and from the Greenfield Public Schools. And they are, once they enroll in the Greenfield Public Schools, they stay with us through graduation. And the school choice program does two things. It attracts different types of students and scholars than we may presently have, and that helps round out our student body. A number of positive student athletes and scholars have joined us through the school choice program. And it also does bring revenue into the school that we rely on for an important part of our budget every year. And we do budget this in, it's not an additional fund on top of what we budget. It's very much part of what we rely on for some of our technology, some of our other purchases, and including staff. Earlier this budget season, the school committee voted to add a position out of school choice at the Four Corners School, which brought down class size. So in front of you, I would ask that you review the numbers that are available, and that you vote to accept these numbers, which we will then advertise and begin the process of selecting by lottery where people have, where we have more interest than we have available seats, which is usually the case. And just by way of explanation, the numbers that are in front of you are because in every classroom, we only offer up seats that are already available in an existing classroom, where there's an open seat that isn't already occupied by a Greenfield student. And so we look at them very closely. We have a principal still with us tonight. And what we've done over the last couple of months is look closely at these numbers, look at them over time as those enrollments change. And these numbers are the maximum available seats that we would offer to neighboring districts to choice into Greenfield.
Thank you, Superintendent. I see Member Hollins.
I, I'm not clear if when we vote this, we're responding to an estimate, because there's a lot of movement at the end of the year, over the summer, during the year, so that what we estimate tonight in May may not be the number of seats we have open May next year. So I'm not clear if when we vote this, it's fixed, or whether it's flexible. For example, if we voted, if we voted up to 15 seats, I'm making this up, in the 11th grade, where we have low enrollment, and at the time, there were only six seats, there wouldn't be a mandate for the superintendent to fill seats that weren't in existence. But if we voted six seats and there were 15 seats that opened up, are we inhibited? That's my question. And I, I, looking at our enrollment reports that we receive, it looks like we have very low enrollment at the moment in grades 11 and 12, where we have a wonderful advanced placement course that people would may desire, particularly if they're college-bound. And I think only two students for grade 11 and 12 may be an underestimate, because I think in one grade, I think we're only around 75 or 80 students. So I, I think that's very low to say that between now and the end of the year, we're only accepting two in those grades. I think we should make the upper grades a little higher.
Okay, so I'm hearing a couple of things from you. One is a suggestion to make the upper grades higher, I'm hearing grades 11 and 12. I'm also hearing you ask if our vote tonight is fixed, whether we can change it down the line. And I'm also hearing an interest in hearing more about how these numbers were, how the superintendent came to these numbers.
No, that's not my interest, it's, I think this is a, we write what our anticipated is. There's a state, there's, the law on this is that the, all the students choicing out can't be more than 2% of the student population statewide. And I think when we're asked, you know, what's the estimate? The state collects that to get a sense if they're going to exceed the limit allowed by law. So it's always-
Okay.
Anyway, I'm interested, is this absolutely fixed? Or is it an estimate?
Member Hollins would like to know if this is absolutely fixed.
So we are required to report to the Department of Education our projected seats. That projection is a, a projection, it is an estimate. But we do then advertise that, and then we hold a lottery. So let's say that we advertise two seats, and let's say that 10 families apply. Let's say that we select two families out of a hat and say no to eight families. If we then had an 11th family approach us and we said, "Oh, here, we'll let you in," then it's essentially unfair to the previous eight families. So we do follow a fairly rigorous process to, there are two dates that are set for lotteries, and it is important that these are by lottery, so we are very consistent about adhering to those, to the extent possible. There are projections, but we hold to them fairly closely. I'm not prepared to increase beyond what the principals of each of these schools have recommended, because we've looked at them very closely, they've looked at their class sizes, and each principal of each building. In fact, speaking with principals, we've really asked them to look very closely, and in some cases, double-check if they can accommodate one or two more students. This is the absolute maximum that I'm comfortable recommending to the committee, based on the principal's assessment.
Member Ward?
What's, what's with the lottery? How is, how is that done?
It, it's truly a lottery. You put the names in a hat, you pick them out. It's by law, because you have to be fair to a lot of different types of students that might be interested in attending your schools.
State laws?
Yes.
Member Jackson, did you have your? Did you have your hand up, or, yeah?
Yes, actually.
Okay.
And I'm asking, because you've brought this up previously, is that some of the, some of our money issues could be related to are not allowing enough students in? And so is that something that we should actually be thinking about as we're looking at this?
So without getting complicated, yes, you, you have to allow enough students in to receive choice revenue in. But if you have, let's say, 20 seats in a classroom and 18 Greenfield children in it, you can't offer more than two seats without needing another teacher. So it, it becomes important that you're adequately funded to begin with, and then you have enough seats. But you don't want to then add one extra student and have to pay for one entire additional teacher. So that's what we've done, and that's why these numbers are kept at the levels that they are.
Member Hollins, did you have an additional? Member Hollins, did you have an additional comment?
Well, with the lottery, the people that don't get in, if they're, in your example, they're wait-listed in the order they're drawn from the lottery. So, if a seat opens up, that's how you address the 10th, 11th person, they go at the bottom of the waitlist. Okay, I just wanted to say, I think the numbers in 11 and 12 are too low based on what's been reported to us about class size at the 11th and 13th level. And I know there was an announcement that we would be cutting advanced placement courses, but when we get to talk about that, it's a different issue. I, I think it's grade 11 and 12, where we have this fabulous advanced placement program. That's where people may really want to come into our high school.
I just want to clarify that there wasn't an announcement that the advanced placement courses were going to be cut. That was part of discussion as an example of any of the number of offerings that we have in Greenfield Public Schools that may need to be modified in order to create a balanced budget for FY '20. I saw Mayor Martin.
Just one observation on the, the high school. We have a capacity of 585 students. I think we have about 510, and we're looking at maybe adding 22. So, my question is, what about those other empty seats? Or are they in classrooms not created? And two, are we at 18 to 20 students per classroom, or are we at 11 to 12, as indicated in some of the online documents?
Okay, first of all, I think you're referring to the fire code when you talk about available space in the building. And so, we're not staffing based on fire code. We're staffing based on reasonable class sizes and enrollment in sections, including AP classes, which do have lower enrollments, certain classes, like, I don't know, industrial arts, that you want to make sure to have low-class size to supervise hands-on students working with equipment. And again, I'm just going to say, I'm not comfortable exceeding the recommendations of the principals that are supervising and staffing these buildings as allowed by law.
Member Johnson?
Just to respond to the question, the statement of so many students is actually 585 students are allowed by law. And that's how the building was designed, for 585. So, it's not a safety measure by the fire department. So, I'm wondering about those 60 extra seats. Are they empty? Are the classroom rooms not being used? Do we have 11 or 12 students per classroom?
Mayor, you'd need more teachers if you want to hire more students, and we don't have available classes right now. Every space is being used in the building. I don't have my class section enrollment report in front of me. If you'd like to discuss, as it's come up three or four times, and each time, the, the high school principal has been confused as to where she's going to put these numerous extra people, the, the high school is essentially full. And if you'd like to have the high school principal or staff speak to that, I suggest we put it on the agenda and bring it up in the future. But tonight, the information has been here. I received no inquiries prior to tonight. High school principal planned to be here, but had a urgent medical issue in her family, and she is with a family member at the hospital. She would have otherwise spoken to your question.
So, I think that's a good idea, to add it to the agenda. So, my question will go unanswered then. I would be, I'm interested also in grades 11 and 12, where we have 72 and 75 students. You know, if I was Councilor Sun, I could go back several decades and say we had 340 students graduating, but I can't go back that far. So, we have, we have certainly declined in the past years in our graduating class. We're graduating everyone who's there, but we are, we only have 72 to 76 students in those two grades, and we're only asking for one choice in. Maybe there's a reason for that. Maybe nobody chooses in in the 11th grade or 12th grade. But I have no qualms with how you came up with the numbers. I'm fine with them, just my observations on those areas.
Member Johnson?
Is there a motion that, that has been made yet?
Not yet.
Is there a motion that is needed?
Yes.
Is the mo, the motion that is needed to approve this?
Yes.
Chart? I'm, I make a motion to approve the school choice seats for 2019 to 2020, as presented.
Second.
That was a tie, but I'll give it to Katie this time. Okay, Member Ward, you had your hand up. Did you have any more? Okay, any further deliberation? Okay, all those in favor of approving the school choice seats for 2019 to 2020, as presented?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That is unanimous. Okay, thanks, everyone. So, the next item is quite a big item. It is now 9:31 PM. The committee did have a vote to end our meetings at 10:00 PM. So, I'm just mentioning this now, because we may need more time, and I want everyone to be aware that we might need more time. So, in your packet is an open meeting law complaint that we received. As well, I've included the top page, which is open meeting law instructions. This was, I don't see a date. I believe filed on 5/2. Well, that's what's listed in the complaint. And then, I'll just read here from the open meeting law instructions. Instructions for a public body that receives a complaint. The chair must disseminate the complaint to the members of the body. That has been done, as well as the attachments that were included with the complaint. The public body must meet to review the complaint within 14 business days. That is what we're doing today, and that is well within 14 business days. After review, but within 14 business days, the public body must respond to the complaint in writing, and must send to the Attorney General a copy of the complaint and a description of any action the public body has taken to address it. At the same time, the body must send the complaint a copy, the complainant a copy of its response. The public body may delegate this responsibility to counsel or a staff member, but only after it has met to review the complaint. If a public body requires more time to review the complaint and respond, it may request an extension of time for good cause by contacting the Division of Open Government. Okay, so here we are. I'll read the complaint. This was filed by Mr. Paul Jablon of 73A Fairview Street, Greenfields. The description of alleged violation. The attached emails dated between November 9th, 2018, and April 17th, 2019, were written and sent by Greenfield School Committee members, a preponderance sent by Susan Hollins, to the full body or its full budget subcommittee. These emails are deliberative in nature, because they address numerous topics, including important budget issues other than agendas and schedules, and in each instance, the recipients constitute a quorum. As such, the emails violate open meeting law, which requires that deliberation be conducted in full public view during a properly posted open meeting. Since these numerous emails were intentionally composed mostly by Susan Hollins, including using her personal email account, and sent over the period, over the period of a few months, it is very likely that she has sent numerous other deliberative emails over the course of her term in office. I understand that a number of these emails from January and February have been deemed a violation of the open meeting law by the school attorney. I am submitting this as a Greenfield citizen, but also as one of a number of concerned citizens on the FCPR Education Task Force that has been following this issue for an extended period of time, at least since last summer, when Susan Hollins was warned about this issue by the school committee chair. What action do you want the public to take in response to your complaint? The school, school committee members, especially Member Hollins, should cease and desist from conducting public school committee business through email. The school committee should investigate all emails sent by Member Hollins over the course of her tenure on the committee, and publish all similar instances of deliberation by Member Hollins on its website. The publication should be announced in the local media, so that the public will be advised and have the opportunity to view the deliberations. Okay, so today, we are reviewing this complaint in anticipation of preparing a response. I want to first ask, have, has everyone had a chance to look at the attachments and review? Okay, I'm seeing yeses. Member Johnson is saying no. There is a lot to read. There's a lot to read, Glenn. I know that you're new to the group today. Member Hollins, first?
I've had two or three conversations for technical guidance with the Office of the Attorney General, and I think the person submitting the complaint is correct, that there are numerous emails exchanged between members of the school committee, and also school committee that go outside the quorum provision of the open meeting law. Many of them are for me. However, there are many ways that this law is violated that people may not understand. When the chairman of the school committee responds to someone like a parent, we have five or six of these in the last month, and copies this as a full school committee, that's an OML violation.
Speak into the microphone, I can't hear you.
Okay. When, when there's a letter of appreciation, I sent a couple of these. I sent one to the superintendent, appreciating the film, Festivale, that's a violation, because it went to the full committee. And if there's a letter that any of us send to each other, saying we went to a program, and it was a good program, that's a violation. If we write a letter to staff, saying thank you for your good work, that's a violation. If a third party, non-member of the committee, like the superintendent or business manager, writes to us about a topic before us that we have deliberated, that can be construed as a violation, because it stimulates or facilitates out-of-meeting deliberation.
That is not accurate.
Do I have a point of privilege?
Well, I have the floor.
I believe I have a point of privilege, because I was mentioned by name.
But I haven't finished my comments.
I believe I have a point of privilege, because I was mentioned by name.
I...
Everybody, stop. Okay? We are focusing on responding to this open meeting law complaint.
I understand, and I'm telling you, I've had two or three conversations with the Attorney General, and I've written a letter clarifying all the different ways we violate open meeting law. And from my review of our messages, it involves everybody on the committee, except Katie Karen. The letter from Member Ekstrom, telling us what she was interested in discussing, is a violation. And the question is, how do we respond to that? And I've thought about that, and I've talked to the Attorney General, and what is corrective action we could take, which I'd like to share. One is, we could invite a presentation here from the Attorney General's office. I've made that recommendation before, and I think we've been advised that they're not available, but they are available. There's a program next week in Amherst, and they would gladly come and do a presentation. Another is, if we had an open file on our website, which I also made a motion to have recently, and it was denied by the committee, but if we did, then a lot of these things that address the quorum would not be a violation if, for example, I wrote a letter that I went to the music department, or camp, said the basketball game was great, or whatever. If it said, post to our open file, that would not be a violation. This is because we address the quorum provision of law. So, my thought is, and there are other things. For example, if I write a note with, our practice now is that we go through the chairperson of the subcommittee to address anybody in the superintendent's office. The Attorney General's office said three-person subcommittees are really a problem, because any member who addresses something to the chair automatically, on a three-member subcommittee, goes outside the quorum provision. So, our practice of going through the chairperson would have to be changed. The technical assistance was, I have all this written out. The technical assistance was to allow school committee members to communicate questions directly to the business manager, then it's not a quorum violation. And there are other suggestions that have to do with our basic operational practices that will prevent this. For example...
So, I think that we are straying. I think that we are straying from the response to the open meeting law complaint.
Not really, because of the response that I like to suggest. I'm, what I'm saying is, from my review of emails, everyone on the subcommittee crosses this line on quorum communications. I've reviewed their communications. And I think the complainant is correct, and I think we need to respond and say the complainant is correct, and it involves the majority of the school committee, and we're interested in taking corrective action. And I think the correction action should be, again, I've had two or three long conversations on this. I think the correction action should be that we have two school committee members review technical guidance on these topics with the Attorney General's office, and we make specific, we review specific communications, different types, and we come back with recommendations to the school committee on how we can avoid this type of communication, because my conversations included specific suggestions on how we can avoid the quorum issue. And that also, we schedule an open meeting law presentation through the AG's office for everyone, because there's quite a nuance, like with the mayor. The mayor is the mayor, and wears different hats. So, even though he's on a subcommittee, someone, I've written three notes to the mayor about pieces of legislation and funding. They're not technically an open meeting law violation, even though it's a quorum, because our committee doesn't have jurisdiction over legislation. So, it's very complicated, and I think our response should be that it's true, and that it involves many of us in different ways, and that we're committed to correcting it through technical assistance. And I think that should be the response.
Thank you. Okay, I see three hands on this side. Katie?
I think that we did not, I don't think that Susan meant to stray, but I think in the end, we did stray. We need to respond directly to this. I do support giving us some instruction in this process. I don't think we need to have two people look it up and then report back. If we're all going to take a lesson on it, then we all just take a lesson on it, then there's no, then we can ask our direct questions. We don't have to worry about interpretation, because just so happened in policy recently, we started talking about this while we were working on a different policy, and it became quite clear to me, the solution is that you don't email the entire school committee if you have to have one person answer a question. But that's those simple things that don't seem to be as clear to everyone. And so, I think that it just, the correct response is, we did this, we're, I don't disagree with the request to have all of the ones we messed up on made public, because that is deliberation, it should be public. And I also think that having a lesson is not a bad thing, because that, clearly, we don't all understand.
Member Johnson?
So, what is needed from us tonight on this topic?
I think that what we would do is put together a, a summary response, and then any, including any corrective action, and so that this can be put together into a response to Mr. Jablon, as well as the Attorney General's office.
And where does it, is it part of this process, when someone makes a complaint, that we need to make a response, or?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And that's included in, on this sheet here, and I read it at the start. So, we do have to make a response within 14 business days. And then, Mr. Jablon has some time to review and decide... time to review and decide whether or not he is satisfied with the response, or whether he would like the Attorney General to also weigh in.
So, can I, I don't know if I'm done.
Sure.
But I'm wondering if I should just make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we follow the guidance he's, that we take the action that he's requested of us.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. So the action that he has requested is that school committee members, especially Member Hollins, should cease and desist from conducting public school committee business through email. The school committee should investigate all emails sent by Member Hollins over the course of her tenure on the committee and publish all similar instances of deliberation by Member Hollins on its website. The publication should be announced in the local media so that the public will be advised and have the opportunity to view the deliberations. Is there any discussion? Yes, Member Hollins?
Well, I realize that I continue to be a target, and I would just say that if this committee is going to support only my emails being reviewed, I'm going to file an open meeting law against everyone else who has done this and ask that every single email they've ever sent also be reviewed, because it's ridiculous to support targeting one member when everyone does this. Chairman sent us a big letter yesterday about voting today. I mean, it's something that goes on all the time. And it's, the Attorney General's office said this is such a big issue, because these rules were based before email was present, that the legislature is looking at laws now to change it so that you can have it. So if you support just me, I will ask a complaint that every other person here go through this. I don't think it's necessary. It's targeting.
I see the superintendent, and then I see Member Johnson.
I would like to inquire first if, because individual members were named in this complaint, do you have any advice on how individual members should participate in the deliberation about responding to the complaint relative to the discussion tonight?
Thank you for that question. I actually do not, I do not have the answer to that, and that is a relevant question that really should be put forth to the Ethics Commission. Did you have a follow-up, or?
I have two other questions. The second is, is it possible to make public to the committee or to the general public the dates and times of the conversations or the content of it? You've related a number of pieces of information from your private conversations with the Attorney General's office, some of which I, perhaps I'm not understanding clearly, but earlier I heard you say that providing a list of potential cuts that you had prepared at a public meeting to the business manager wasn't a violation of open meeting law in your understanding of your conversation from the Attorney General. Our business manager is a staff and not a committee member. So just as an example of information that I, maybe I'm mishearing it, but the characterization of information provided by the Attorney General, I think it would be helpful to this committee if it was very clear, especially given the numerous pages of concern that are in front of the committee, and just the intent to get clear about how this committee moves forward without difficulty.
I would be glad to do that. I've written back to thank the person for all their technical clarification with their technical clarification stated in it. It's very complicated, and I would be glad to share my correspondence with the person from the Attorney General's office with the committee.
That would be helpful.
I'm seeing Member Johnson. You're good, right? Member Johnson?
I just wanted to say I'd welcome a friendly amendment to include all school committee members in terms of investigating the possible, you know, breaches of open meeting law.
I see Mayor Martin, and then I saw Katie's hand.
I believe there was a friendly amendment offered with no second?
Well, it's his motion.
He said that he welcomed one, and then nobody gave it.
He was saying I would accept one if someone wanted to give him one.
I didn't catch that part, sorry.
We're getting there.
Yes, thank you. I'm saying that the remedy situation is that school committee members, especially Member Hollins, should cease and desist from conducting public school committee businesses through email. If that was the original motion, then it speaks to the remedy, school committee members. And I don't think there's a need to offer to spank and scold Member Hollins in a special motion to seek more information on open meeting violations by all the members. On that, I'd like to add that I have taken liberty as mayor to publish all of the emails of this particular violation on the website, the city website, so anyone can read the content of these emails, since they are public documents as of this moment. I find them, I would wish I got more information and communication from school committee members on the topics raised by these illegal communications. So I'm very concerned about some of the questions raised in meetings that don't get solved in meetings, and questions raised in email communications that don't get addressed at meetings. So I'm all for the entire committee taking a lesson in open meeting law. Secondly, on Mr. Jablon's request on his remedy, by the way, what does FCCPR stand for? Does anyone know?
Franklin County-
Franklin County Continuing the Political Revolution. It's the group that, kind of progressive left group that came out of the Bernie Sanders movement, and I'll disclose that I'm a member of Franklin County Continuing the Political Revolution.
Okay, so I guess I'm a bit behind the times. I don't really understand what the continuing the political revolution might mean in today's terms. The second part of his is requesting that all of the emails sent by Member Hollins over the course of her tenure on the committee and to publish all similar instances of deliberation by Member Hollins on its website. Clearly, this lady is being targeted. We've heard it, we've seen it for the past year and a half, and anyone who denies that has got their head buried. The publication should be announced in the local media so that the public will be advised and have the opportunity to view the deliberations. Mr. Jablon, that is called public scolding, maybe even bullying on some level. So I think that the opportunity to put, to put the deliberations, public deliberations, let's have it. Come here next time while we're going through our open meeting law violation training, and let's discuss the real motives for the budget discussions in these emails that you've requested a FOIA for, Freedom of Information Act. So now you have them, now they're on the website. I encourage everyone to read these emails. They're interesting. And they're not only members. The superintendent has responded on several, and so has the Joanna, Joanna Wallace. So they're all here, and it must be public information. So I'm all for taking and following up with Member Karen, and also publishing the emails on the website.
Could I please speak to one thing?
I see the superintendent, and then I see Member Karen.
Okay, I've heard this several times, I just want to say clearly, Joanne is the secretary to the committee and to the superintendent. She sends your packets. She's not a member of the committee. If you'd like her to stop emailing you, her job would be much easier, but she does not deliberate, she only sends information. She schedules dates and times. She emails committees about the only allowable exception to the open meeting law, which is setting an agenda and distributing materials, and she does that regularly. Second, as the superintendent, it's my job to advise you. I'm also a non-voting member of the committee. I do not constitute a quorum. I'm not a member of this public body. I am an advisor to the public body. I would be happy to get further clarification from the Attorney General or whomever, but it is my understanding that because I'm not a member of this public body, I'm not in violation of an open meeting law for a body I do not belong to. So I just want to be clear about that. I will be happy to preface every email I send to the committee with, please do not respond to this email, but I do, by contract, have certain obligations, for example, to inform you when there is a evacuation or an emergency proceeding. That's in my contract. I do so by emailing the committee, and generally, the committee does not respond. That's the appropriate way to go about doing that. So just to clarify, I guess I'll leave it there.
I want to reiterate that. Our staff members are not members of our body, so they actually can send us information. They can send us opinion, and in fact, it's their job. That's why we pay them, to give us information and opinion on, so, yeah, I think it's really important to just underline that wholeheartedly. And also, this is really about, you know, whether or not we're trying to sway a vote of the committee or a potential vote of the committee. And so I will yield now to Member Karen. I saw your hand, and then I see Member Johnson.
First of all, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to Glenn's motion and say that we release, make all of the possible ones public. It shouldn't just be targeted after Member Hollins. Everybody's done it. And secondly, I'd like to add to the motion that we are going to schedule a open meeting law lesson from the Attorney General.
If it's okay, I think we should do that in a separate motion.
Great. That's fine. Do you want to accept the friendly amendment?
Did you say the amendment exactly as you wanted to?
Oh, sorry, again. It's already after 9:30, my brain's not working as well anymore. I'd like to un-
Should we have her read the motion as it is?
Yeah, we'll read the motion as it is, Susan. That might help me.
That we take the action that he is requesting.
I would like to add that we add in the full committee to release their emails, not just Susan Hollins.
I accept your amendment.
And then, separate topic, just, I think we're straying from conversation by discussing what open meeting law means.
I agree.
None of us seem to understand it. I don't think we should argue about it anymore. I think we should fix this and get a lesson.
So I spoke briefly with Attorney Smith about this and the committee's role. His recommendation was to request Member Hollins' emails essentially to follow through with the requested action that is printed here in the open meeting law complaint, and further to request those that may be on personal email addresses from Member Hollins. And then I just want to say that, you know, I gave this considerable thought. This is something that has been on my mind. You know, I've brought this to the committee in a general form, and I have reviewed, you know, our group has been given the open meeting law guide multiple times. We've had conversation with the Attorney General's office. We have been reminded not to deliberate online several times, numerous times. I try to do a simple search, and, you know, I'm coming up with at least a dozen times in the past two years where it's been clearly stated, stop deliberating online, or don't deliberate online. And I recall my emotions at the start of last year, beginning as the chairperson, and feeling really strained, feeling like I suddenly was having to be the open meeting law police, and it was very, very stressful to me. And I do think that we all learn at different paces. We all learn in different ways. And I also feel that we have all been given this information and time to consider. With all that being said, I also fully recognize that we do make mistakes. I know that I have made open meeting law mistakes in the past, I know that. And over time, have really learned a lot about the open meeting law, especially in my chairperson role. With all that said, I, my one question about the motion is, what does it mean to investigate all emails? What does that mean? And is that something that is possible? Are we asking for simply just releasing emails to the public, or are we asking for the body to review all emails? What is it? I'm not sure that that is something that is actually, something that we're able to do really in terms of time and energy. Just my final thoughts. I do fully support us having the Attorney General's office come to provide us a training. That was a recommendation from the attorney as well. And I think that especially given the violation, they will happily come to, I'm hoping, they will happily come to Greenfield and provide a training for the group. We could potentially add on other elected officials here in Greenfield. I saw Member Ward, and then I see the superintendent.
The emails are available to the public, are they not?
The emails in the complaint are, absolutely. They were made public.
Any email that we send through our GPSK12.org, anybody can request that.
Yeah, absolutely. Anybody can make a request.
They're all backed up and filed.
They're all backed up. So I don't know if we need to do any investigation going back. We clearly have a violation here.
Multiple.
Multiple. I'm sure that I have violated the open meeting law. I can certainly tell you that I have not been a part of any conspiracy to sway votes. I mean, I've asked questions, I've, all I know is that I'm trying to do what's best for the city, and that's it, as honestly as I can. And that's what I've been a part of. If anybody wants to dive into that, let them. I'm not going through it. We've got one, we can address it and move on. That's my feeling. Thank you.
Did you have? I see Member Johnson.
Move to call the vote.
Member Farber, or I'm sorry, Susan Farber, could you please read back the motion?
That we take the action that he is requesting, and we release the emails of the full committee.
Okay, so we're first voting on calling the vote. All those in favor of calling the vote? I'm no. Anyone opposed? No, so that motion carried, right? What were you, here we are?
I just wanted to clarify what it meant.
No.
I don't understand the motion.
So the motion carried to call the vote. I believe that Member Karen and I were the only no's, and everyone else was a yes. Is that accurate? So we are now calling the question and the motion. Again, one more time, thank you.
That we take the action that he is requesting, and we release the emails of the full committee.
And to be clear, we are taking the action that he is requesting is all school committee members stop conducting business, public business through email, and the school committee should investigate all emails sent by Member Hollins over the course of her tenure on the committee and publish all similar instances of deliberation by Member Hollins on its website. The publication should be announced in the local media so that the public will be advised and have the opportunity to view the deliberations. Okay, all those, I just read what he said. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed?
Motion being inclusive of all?
No, it's the motion to just me.
Well, he added on to also include all of us.
It includes his whole statement about me.
But it includes all of us doing that, not just you.
Yeah, so-
That's added on, that says-
It's that last piece that she, that's added on, that says-
But I made an amendment to his motion, saying, including all of our emails, not just Susan Hollins.
So, Susan Farber, can you read the motion to us one more time?
That we take the action that he is requesting, and we release the emails of the full committee.
And the vote was?
We haven't voted.
So, we are voting right now. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
No. Okay, so the motion fails. The reason why I can't support the motion is because, first of all, there is need to actually email one another. And so, it doesn't make sense for us to completely stop utilizing email. I am actually completely unwilling to spend more time on the phone, calling people, and utilizing different communication strategies in order to ensure that people are getting the information that they need to, say, schedule a meeting. We are allowed to utilize email for certain purposes, including scheduling meetings and putting forward, for example, the packet for tonight. So, just because of the way that it's written, we can't actually accomplish it and still function as a body. So, I think that the spirit of it is to stop deliberating online. And again, I looked at so many emails today where I said, "Stop delivering online," sometimes in all caps, so I can wholeheartedly get behind that spirit. And then, in terms of investigating the emails, I just, I'm not sure how we do that as a body. How do we investigate emails? So, I am, I, I would suggest that, in response, the committee, and I move that the committee stop deliberating online, request all emails from Member Hollins, and invite the Attorney General to give us a training, and simply include in our response a recognition of the fact that there were some open meeting law violations in this packet, and we will continue with the three items that I noted. Is there a second? Second, my Member Karen. Any deliberation on it?
I don't know if we have to use the exact language in the suggested remedy by Mr. Javelin. I'm thinking that we, as the school committee, admit the violations, and that we will take training, and that all committee members, business on emails is available to anyone anytime. The ones that are provided with the allegation of the violation are on the website for review. I've gone through them a couple times. I mean, that's, there's some good, honest conversation there. So let everyone get a chance to read what people are accusing others of manipulating budget process.
Okay, so, there's a motion on the table. Is there, I sort of heard you create a new motion.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm just saying that I won't support this motion, but I'd like us to, again, as we've mentioned in the past, about allegations coming before the committee, that we be simple in our response and just deal with the question.
Any, yes, Superintendent?
So, there's a lot of discussion about training and materials. First, I'd like to point out that the MAS C has provided open meeting law training and materials. There was information provided to every new member. There's currently a training available on the GPSK12 website. I'd be happy to email that out with a note that says, "Please do not respond to this email." That's available right now. I think Member Hollins pointed out that the training in Amherst is maybe next week. It's very soon, and you can register with the Attorney General and attend. It might be useful tonight to commit to attending if the members of the committee are acknowledging that there is a need for training and there's an opportunity next week. My concern is that this process is quite distracting. We have a significant budget shortfall. We have real issues in front of us. I'm not saying that this should be glossed over. I'm saying the opposite. This, as a governance board, is setting the example for the district, and I think the public does look to public governance to set a higher bar. I want to state something which maybe I shouldn't comment on at all, which is, it doesn't matter to me if people say, "The schools are wonderful" in an email, or if people say, "The schools are terrible" in an email. The point is that the public deserves to know the content of those conversations. It's not, you know, "I like blue," and "No, I like green," and that there's a disagreement here. It has nothing to do with that. It has to do with the fact that the public deserves to know what business is before the committee. Emails can be very mundane. The public, these conversations in public can be very mundane. The public still has a right to know. And I think it's sort of missing that the school committee's own policies very clearly spell out. We had a chance to review this in Policy Subcommittee two nights ago. It basically says, "Don't send email unless you're setting up a meeting."
Send emails.
"Don't send an email, because you, as a body, can only conduct business as a body." Individual members have no governing authority. The mayor, in his role as mayor, can execute his work as mayor, but he doesn't need members of the Subcommittee or Full Committee to do so. So, I just think this is really quite simple, and the committee, to be functional, needs to take some clear action. I guess I'm asking you, as the Superintendent of Schools, to please take this seriously, because you task me with writing this district, hiring people, and they watch these meetings.
I'll say, I think that Mayor Martin's proposal about what should be done makes a lot of sense, and I would like to hear that made as a motion at some point. But I also would like to say that I don't agree with the mayor's comments about kind of saying, "This is something that should be on the website, because these conversations should be happening." In fact, as has been acknowledged, these emails show members breaking a very important law about transparency that was passed in Massachusetts for a reason, some of which the Superintendent is speaking to. So, I guess in that regard, I don't really, I wanted to just state that the law has meaning, and it's not just that the content of what you're talking about may be quite benign and might be great, but the fact that these conversations are happening, and that this law is, there's so many resources available from the state to learn this law, and many of you have been members on this committee for a long time, and it's disappointing and angering to me as a citizen, before joining the committee, to see so many of these violations. So.
Member Ward.
I'd like to get on with this. I've seen the emails. They're wrong. But I've been through the 2020 budget process as a chair, and I've witnessed lying and deceit, which trump any email that I've seen. So, maybe, I understand it might not be breaking a law, but it's, it's breaking boundaries. Okay? So, I'd like to move on.
So, I'm hearing you call the question. So, can you repeat the motion that's on the table?
That the committee stop deliberating online, and request all emails from Member Hollins, and invite the Attorney General to give us a training, and simply include in our response that recognition that there are some open meeting law violations in this packet, and we will continue with those three items.
Okay. All those in favor?
Me?
We're calling, voting to call the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Do we want to call the question?
Yes.
All those in favor of calling the question?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. I think that's unanimous. What were you, Susan?
Call the question. Yes.
Unanimous.
Susan?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so, and the motion on the table is the one that she just read? All those in favor? It's me. All those opposed?
No.
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 All those abstaining? One abstention. Member Karen, you're a no. Okay, so, motion fails. Mayor Martin?
I'd like to move that we admit violations of the allegations as put forward by Mr. Javelin, that we also set up a file on, I'm sorry, just, let me take that off, that we admit violations of the allegations proposed by Mr. Javelin, and that we publish the emails as presented by Mr. Javelin on the website.
Friendly amendment to take a training? I'm sorry, it hasn't been seconded.
That could be another motion. Second it.
Of-
What's your friendly?
First, it got seconded, and then I'm offering now a friendly amendment to have the committee take, to have the committee trained by the Attorney General's office, or to take an open meeting law training.
Accepted.
I'd like to move to call the question.
Okay, all those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye. Could you read back the motion?
That we admit violation of the allegations as put forward by Mr. Javelin, and that we publish the emails as presented by Mr. Javelin on the website. The school website? Is that the intent?
I think you drew that, right?
Yeah, no, they'll be on the website tomorrow. If they're not on the website, the city website now.
Do you want them on the school website or the city website?
How much of the emails as presented by Mr. Javelin on the city website?
The city.
And that the committee take an open meeting law training.
Yes.
Okay. Just to clarify, all these materials, as all committee materials are already on the website of the GPSK12.org.
Good.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Didn't we just do that? Didn't we call the question? And then we have a new motion, and you read it back. So, we all voted in favor of calling the question, and then now we are voting on the motion. Okay? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay. Thank you. So, I'll prepare a response to include that and send it out. And I suppose it's unclear whether I should CC everyone.
That's a seven, they're all seven, so we just can't respond.
It was a little bit of a joke.
That's correct.
What is it, Member Hollins?
I'd like to recommend that the person we bring in to talk to us be Hannah Rush from the Attorney General's Office, and not a generalist. She's been providing clarification. I may have sent emails, but I'm presented series of questions. If someone does this, is that a violation? Someone does that. And I think she's quite specific. All of the different variations and rulings the Attorney General's Office has made are not clear just by reading the guidelines.
They're also available online. So, I feel like we're going off topic. Do you want to put a motion forward?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that we request Hannah Rush from the Attorney General's Office, who's been providing guidance.
Is there a second?
Second.
I see Superintendent.
Before there's a vote on that, could you please clarify if that's the individual you've already personally spoken to? And if so, I guess I wonder about an individual asking the Attorney General prior to filing this response. It seems to predispose the response. I-
Let's speak to the motion.
The motion is to have the person that she spoke to individually provide training.
Technical assistants, and she gives in services in the Western Mass. She's on the technical assistance team.
So, I've actually spoken with her before.
Yeah, she's very-
I see your hand, Member Johnson.
I'd like to suggest that we not worry about the specific trainer who comes to us. If they're from the Attorney General's Office, they'll give us a decent training on open meeting law. It's not, they know how to do this, so I wouldn't want to limit us in terms of scheduling or logistics, in terms of requiring a particular trainer.
Okay. There's a motion on the table to-
Withdraw.
Request.
I withdraw the motion.
[laughing]
I withdraw it. She's-
What is this?
One second.
Okay, so, motion is withdrawn. I think we should move on.
Move the agenda.
I, you know, I do, no, I'm just going to close with the fact that I don't think it's bullying to utilize the open meeting law complaint system. This is the formal system that is in place in our state to bring, to raise complaints or inquiries about elected officials. And so, I think that it's perfectly fine and relevant, and it's the formal process for filing complaints. I don't see that as bullying. I don't see that as isolating individuals. So, we made our response. We've got it together. We're going to get a training. We're now on number nine, which is Subcommittee Minutes and the Use of the School Committee Secretary. So, this has come up because there has been a significant amount of discussion at Subcommittee related to minutes. This did come forward as a request from Member Hollins, I think, at our last meeting, if not the one before that. And the committee actually voted it down to review the vote of the committee related to the School Committee Secretary. This has really put me in a complex situation, because I'm observing a significant amount of time and energy that's being utilized in reviewing minutes at the Subcommittee level that may or may not be productive. It seems not productive. It seems to be getting really under everyone's skin. So, I think that there's a need to address this. As well, there is process related to Subcommittee Minutes. We've been reviewing our policy related to Subcommittees and School Committee, just overall processes. And, you know, it's really come to my attention that the committees utilize different processes for approving their Subcommittee Minutes or voting them into record. And we don't really have a set system for that, and it has kind of changed over the years that I've been on the committee. So, I think that actually, I don't even know what to suggest, because the committee has voted down reviewing the vote related to the School Committee Secretary, but I think that that's at the heart of what's going on here, because the committee did vote to have a School Committee Secretary. That position is filled. That secretary takes our minutes. They either take our minutes through the use of a recorder, or they, if possible, in the past, were present at meetings. That became untenable, and so we started utilizing a recording device in order to allow for some flexibility. And then, here we are now with still ongoing issues with our Subcommittee Minutes. So, there's a couple of things that need to happen. One is, we've got a School Committee Secretary. We should utilize a School Committee Secretary, or make a decision. I'm not sure. There may be a need for a decision on this. The other part is, there is a need to review process related to Subcommittee Minutes. The other part is, there is a need to review process related to Subcommittee Minutes. And it could be helpful to actually bring this up specifically at our open meeting law training. Um, I think the AG would have some guidance related to it. Um, and then, in general, I am just putting forward a very strong request to, for us to just stop utilizing so much of our energy on reviewing these minutes when we can be reviewing matters that are important to the full committee business. And, so, so I'm seeing Member Hollins. I'll yield to you, Member Hollins.
I have three comments. In your packet, we specifically asked Attorney, um, Attorney Quinn? Attorney Gordon Quinn, a question, "Who's responsible for the content of Subcommittee meetings?"
It's supposed to be minutes.
Minutes. And the answer is that it's the body. It's the Subcommittee that's responsible. That's the attorney's answer. Second thing I want to say is, we committed tonight our concern for complying with open meeting law. We just had a half an hour discussion about emails. And we have committed tonight our great concern about being transparent about our budget. At our meetings, Subcommittee meetings, we had misadvice about minutes. Somewhere in November, that they were not, they would only be action items. It's on a tape. Not general discussion. That's a violation of the open meeting law. Violate, the open meeting law requires a summary of discussion on each topic. Let me finish, please. We have several months of meetings that were according to guidelines that don't meet open meeting law that left out discussion. Discussion that the Subcommittee on Budget felt was important in order to be transparent about what we discussed. And that's why there's been a concern. We also didn't get our meeting, minutes until we came to the next meeting, so we couldn't review discussion. So, I think if our attorney is saying a Subcommittee is responsible for its own minutes, then we shouldn't be in a, then the Subcommittee should be allowed to decide if they want to take their own minutes and oversee what's in them and get them out quickly or not. That's all.
And I have, my only response to that is that the school committee, our body, our full body, voted to hire a person, to create a position in order to support our Subcommittees in this way. And so.
These were supposed, we voted to have someone at our meetings and then the person couldn't come. The meetings are taped. I have listened to every one of our tapes. Some of them, you can't hear what's going on.
Okay, I'm gonna, I moved to table, Subcommittee Minutes and the Use of the School Committee Secretary. Um, we can bring it back at the next meeting with additional information. I think it's getting late. Yep. Uh, is there? Okay. All those in favor of tabling until next month? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, any abstentions? What are you, Susan?
I think we have to address it because we're wasting too much time on one end.
Okay, so you're a no. I believe that the motion carries to, um, table until next month. So, there is reason to go into executive session for a very brief executive session. I moved to enter into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating bodying of the public body and the, and the chair, so declares. This is in relation to the Administrative Assistance Contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Karen, and a roll call, please, Secretary.
Member Hollins, yes.
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 Karen, yes. Thank you. And myself, yes, we have a quorum.
Okay. So, we are now in executive session. Um, we will not return for any votes, so we will. That's, that's it for GCTV. Thank you so much for signing off on the air. Thank you.